And again, apologize for being a couple of minutes late myself. I am pleased to announce that the ladies varsity soccer team did win their opening state tournament game four to three.
Great.
And now the boys are playing and I am pained being here as much as I love you all. And I know Frank is helping us too in the back, so thank you Frank. I know he's got his heart over there as well.
So would this be a good time, since we're on the theme of complimenting wins?
Yes.
To compliment the football team?
Absolutely.
For their 14-13 win over Westwood Saturday?
That was exciting too, wasn't it?
For their first tournament game. Absolutely, it was great. Congrats to both teams.
In tough conditions?
It wasn't pleasant weather, I'll just say.
Friday night?
Saturday.
Oh, Saturday.
Yeah, we talked-
14-13, Westwood.
We talked last meeting about what a good fall season it's been and it continues, so that's great.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any visitors tonight? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Joseph Garrity from Foxborough High School. I have some sad news to share to the committee. As you may have guys heard, Boston's longest-serving mayor has died Thursday at age 71. I'm just wondering if we can do a moment of silence for him.
It's a great idea, Joe. Thank you very much.
Very thoughtful.
Any other visitors? Seeing none, move on to the minutes, regular meeting minutes of October 20th.
Bruce, I just had a couple minor things.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I noticed today on page three, under Acceptance of Donations, I believe Mrs. Goransky has only one L in her Michelle. So if we could just make that minor correction. And on the last page, page four, I think it should say, under where it said, "Mrs. Adair noted parent feedback was positive regarding the recent professional," I think it should say Development Day. So, but that's it, those are just, sorry, it's just me being me, but that's all I had.
No, that's, those are good.
Could I motion that we accept them as amended?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Teaching and learning highlights.
Yes, we thought-
I thought we have a draft for a subcommittee meeting.
Oh, sorry, wrong pile.
Need a motion to accept the policy subcommittee meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I was gonna make, oh-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was making the first motion.
I'm on the second.
I'll second that motion.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're already gone off the tracks here.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's gonna be a fun night.
Oh, boy.
Thank you, Bevy.
You know, before I forget, since you just approved the minutes of the subcommittee, may I just note that it's been very helpful of the policy subcommittee coming to meet and that was an example of, not necessarily when a new policy comes from MASC to be recommended, but it was an example of us not sure if the policy was clear and Diana and I met with the policy subcommittee, which is Bevy Lord and Tina Bellinger, and it was just really helpful to go through those documents and clarify what the policy actually says and then go through the, we went through the high school handbook to see whether there were areas that could be made a little bit more clear in the handbook to make sure that they dovetail with the policy. So, there's no recommendations coming out of this meeting, but I just found it really helpful to use a policy subcommittee in different ways, other than just if something new comes down from on high, from MASC, so I just wanted to thank them.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I felt very pleased with the meeting because we spent time and did a lot of cross-referencing so that the handbook will have the notation of which policy number to go to for verification.
That's great.
So that will be tweaked very nicely. It'll be in the next publication.
Thank you, ladies. And while we're on policies, did everybody receive the notice from MASC? So this looks like this requires just some brief policy work too.
We are on it.
You are on it. To be visited at a future meeting.
Absolutely.
Terrific.
We mentioned that during our meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, we are, it just, so you might know the only, the student discipline policies that you see there actually is on the agenda for our administrative team on Wednesday and we're having Dan Brown, our school attorney, come and just make sure that we all fully understand the different nuances of the new discipline law. I mean, although it has been reflected this year in what our schools are doing, but sometimes different schools can apply it differently, as Mrs. Myers-Pakla pointed out, so just to make sure we're all on solid ground with what the new attendance policies are in the state and the regulations, we're having him come to speak to our whole team and just to make sure we're on the same page. That will be the last half hour of our meeting and Tina is actually gonna join us so that she can listen to the discussion from the attorney himself, from the council, and make sure that if any changes have to be made to our policy, she'll already be informed. And, you know, Mrs. Lord has a conflict, usual, essence woman travel, but, so-
This is for school committee business, I believe.
It is.
It is.
It is.
It also means we don't have to publish it as a-
That's true.
-policy subcommittee meeting, 'cause there will only be one in the-
So we thought that would be probably more efficient than our trying to relate back how he explained what needs to be done.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other minutes, Bevy, we have to do?
No, I think we're all set.
All right, now we're ready for teaching and learning highlights.
Yes, so if you remember in August when we were talking about the teaching and learning highlights as part of our mutual goals, we discussed how it would be great if we could try to keep to one of our two teaching and learning highlights being about technology each month because we have so much going on in that. So, I'd like to invite Mr. Aaron Hyer, who's our Director of Technology, and our two secondary principals, Mrs. Abrams and Mrs. Myers-Pakla, if you want to come sit near and, because there the two schools would be affected by student email accounts. So we are in process of creating student email accounts for middle and high school students, so we want to tell you a little bit about why and what the background and context is for that and then have Aaron, the principals, and Amy could also weigh in from a perspective of teaching and learning to show you why. So we have a little bit of a, if you want to, somebody remove that, we have a short power point for you that they've created, so I'll just turn it over to you guys.
Good evening. Just wanted to go through some of the highlights, the rollout of student email and Office 365 collaboration tools. So the Foxborough Public Schools is proud to partner with Microsoft and their educational program for Office 365 provides thousands of schools and universities worldwide with student email and collaboration tools. Email is required by many web-based applications and educational tools that we use today and these tools will allow students and teachers to communicate and collaborate in a safe and secure manner. So, in accordance with the MasQ Evaluators Technology Program Evaluation Report, Indicator Four, the recommendations for Indicator Four, create student email accounts with Office 365 to allow students to, the ability to collaborate and work on assignments, both at school and home, we will be launching these tools at the end of this month. The purpose of this program, these offerings, is to provide students with email, online productivity tools, and collaboration tools. And the outcomes will be increased student engagement, expanded learning opportunities for students, and the expanded school day, the email and these tools and collaboration are everywhere, that these can happen both here in the schools and at home, can happen from mobile devices, can happen from computers, really expand our opportunities. As part of these tools, all students will have Outlook, Web Access for emailing, communicating, Word, Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, Excel, and Excel Survey. So these are tools that are common in business, in the business world today. They're very relevant to what students will be doing in college and in the workforce. And these are tools that will be offered to them through the cloud, so presented through the web. They're available to students on their laptop computers, on iPads, Android devices, and students will be offered five licenses through this program for home computing as well. As part of the collaboration tools, there's the OneDrive. Students have 50 gigs worth of storage space to store files. They can, also students can share files with teachers and teachers can share files with students. This can be multimedia presentations, videos, links, and documents. This also allows students to collaborate on documents with other students and teachers in real time. This is kind of similar to a virtual flash drive. So it's everywhere you're connected to the web, again, can be accessed from mobile devices, from home, from anywhere you can get to the internet. So levels of access. So students five through eight will be able to send and receive email between teachers and their classmates. They'll also be able to send and receive email through approved educational sites and domains. An example of this would be Discovery Education is an approved educational site and domain that we use here with students. They sign up, they have accounts, they have access to digital content, but they will not be able to receive or send sites from any other organization or outside address. Grades nine through 12, email will be open both inside and outside the school environment and all email accounts are monitored and filtered for safety. So the email accounts are a privilege, they're not a right, so violation of school policy applies to the use of email, just like it does within the school day. We don't have, necessarily have additional policies for, for instance, email bullying. The bullying policy applies whether it's through email or in school. Content of the student's email may be reviewed by teachers, by staff, it's for, and filtered for safety. And the district will provide and guarantee technical support pertaining to the students' school email only. Again, student email's an extension of the classroom, so all of the school rules and policies apply to the use of email as they do to students in here, in the buildings during the school day. Digital citizenship, students will learn to interact online in a manner that's consistent with school policies. Students are responsible for their work. So although we have technology tools that expand our capabilities and our learning opportunities, it's still students' responsibility to complete their work and be able to provide it. So students may be required to bring copies or printouts or attachments of things as necessary. And all students must be, complete assignments regardless availability of their student email. So as part of the rollout, we'll be providing students with instruction on appropriate online behavior, including interacting with other individuals on social media and cyber bullying awareness. We'll be reviewing with them procedures and rules for the use of the email accounts and providing them with additional instruction on internet safety and digital citizenship. Just a quick fact here, so 95% of teenagers use the internet and it's up to us to teach them how to use technology responsibly. So in the digital age, everything is so technology-centric, so internet-centric, everything is moving to, we hear this buzz term, the cloud or the web, and email is becoming just a part of everyday life and it's our responsibility to teach students how to use it appropriately.
That's great. Any questions?
Questions?
Comments or questions from the committee?
It's a great opportunity for students to learn skills that they're gonna use in college and after, so it's wonderful. Again, great stuff they're doing here.
I think it'll make it so much easier for students to find other kids that are working in a group, which changes class to class, you don't have to have to find personal email addresses, you'll be able to collaborate in different, with different groups, be able to co-write if you're producing a product together. In addition to OneDrive, there's also a feature that we're just starting to use called OneNote, which is like an online digital notebook. So students would have access to that as well, which could carry them forward as well. So they would have access to, if they took notes this year, they'd have access to that next year, if they were looking back, if it were science, for example. So there's so many collaboration tools that make their work more efficient that we're really looking forward to providing for them. Ladies, madam principals, anything to add?
Yeah, I just think it makes learning more efficient. Right now, it's somewhat cumbersome when you have to ask for a parent email in order for a student in sixth grade, for example, to have access to some of the web-based applications that are used in world cultures. So there's more and more that they're doing online with each other, talking to each other, getting prepared for high school, and I think that it really is something that is relevant as well as engaging. I don't know that they would take advantage at the soccer game, but they're doing a lot at home when it's raining to extend their learning beyond watching videos and sharing with each other and asking each other questions about their learning. So I think it's wonderful.
And I think having everything on the one platform makes it so much easier because the number of times students have come in to say, "I can't download it," or "I can't get it," or "it won't go" because they're coming in from something at home, maybe off of a Google or something like that, and it just doesn't interface well, so this is, everything's on the same, on the same piece. I just think it's going to alleviate a lot of those other issues that we've had along the way.
I actually have a variety of questions and comments, as you might expect, but I wanted the committee to have a chance first, but you guys just answered two of my questions. One of my questions is gonna be, do you find that many of the students, or a reasonable percentage of the students, don't have email access already? And I take it from Mrs. Abrams' comments that that is the case.
For the younger students, yes.
And then, my second question is gonna be, is there a value, or what is the value to us creating an additional email account for students already have one? And I think what you said, Mrs. Myers-Pakla, is it'll create a consistency that you can then rely on from an instructional and administrative standpoint.
And as Mrs. Finelli said too, it allows students to find each other much faster. And truthfully, email accounts are not popular with high school students, so it's always some other way that they're trying to make those connections. And again, this puts us all on the same playing field, much more into, you know, the Instagram, the Snapchats and all of those.
Texting and-
But this is really that learning tool that students will be able to utilize.
I think it also provides for our students a safe email account.
Yes.
Where your student at Foxborough Public Schools, it identifies you as a student if you're looking for information for research, if you're inquiring outside your domain, but it, in addition, it says to our filter, we can filter, we can't filter Yahoo or Gmail or Google, so that we're, we're starting the students in this conversation with the world in a safer environment already that's, you know, controlled by, you know, Aaron.
Yeah, I especially, I especially like, I like the thoughtfulness of five to eight and then nine through 12. I think that's well done.
We spent a lot of time at administrative team meetings discussing the whys and wherefores and who should have access to what and what we're comfortable with and what seems right. So this is definitely a group decision, but even some simpler things, like middle school, for example, if they're involved in clubs and activities, it's easy for the teacher to find them if there's been a change in plans, they don't have to collect personal addresses. We don't, we encourage, or require actually, our staff members to only communicate using school email accounts and not from personal accounts, so we do expect the same from students.
Yeah.
Just teaching students in terms of being in line with our vision, to be members of society in a competitive global economy, learning how to use these tools which are used in the business world, collaborating online, using Microsoft Word, track changes, for instance, to collaboratively work on a document, is something they very likely may do in the business world.
As we know.
In a global, in a global economy where people are not bound by geographical regions or distance, people are working with manufacturing in other countries or in technology and it's, these are very relevant skills.
Yeah, agreed. Tina?
I think this is a very exciting step forward. I'm just curious, and I've read it about a million times, but I haven't committed it to memory, but is our current internet acceptable use policy sufficient, or will it need tweaking to cover everything that you explained up there? I mean, I know we currently require our students to be, you know, responsible digital citizens, that's hard to say, and to use the internet safely and with certain parameters, but will we have to specifically call this out or have parents sign off on it? Have we thought about that?
I don't mind trying and answering that. I think not, but we certainly will ask ourselves that once more. I think not because the techno, acceptable use policy applies to technologies and technology tools.
Okay.
And it's not limited to certain things. We give examples, but it's really how they behave as a digital citizen regardless of the tool.
Okay.
Whether it's a social media site, whether it's a communication device, or whether it's just, you know, what they're doing when they're typing up something on a school computer. So I, going through it in my head right now, I really don't think so, but we'll take a second look at that, because we don't, our policies are not so specific to what device or media they're using.
I just, I know that policy came into being a while ago and our technology has evolved so much and is so much more pervasive, maybe, is the right word? But it's in everything now that the students are doing.
Which is why I think it's referred to as technology tools, so that we weren't limiting and wouldn't have to change it the minute a new tool comes into play.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
That shouldn't have been so hard for me to say, but-
There's a lot of tough stuff in this technology.
Yeah.
Like I mentioned earlier, in terms of bullying, we try to take the stance that bullying is bullying, whether it's online, whether it's on the playground or in the hallway. So really, students are expected to be responsible digital citizens, but to act in a way they would act here in school and during school activities.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
Steve, did you have a comment?
Just, first of all, thank you. I know a ton of work has gone in to all of this and Aaron, it's, again, nice to have you here. It's a good, strong thing for us to have, moving forward technically. I'm gonna throw myself in front of this one. First of all, do we need, should we have, or has it been thought of, that there be, if necessary, parent information sessions to acclimate the parents to this? I'm the king of fat-finger-ing passwords and getting locked out of something that we already have, and then the student or my child will say, "Well, I can't get in," or "I can't get at it and I don't want that." That's one question. Will we have parent information sessions, if they're necessary? The other I had was, if you could talk at a high level about the costs, short and long term, that we've already allocated for this, I know there's money's already involved in this that we've committed, but are there any long-term costs that we see at a very high level that we might need to look out for as a school committee? And then my third question is, is there adaptive software for students with special needs or limitations that might need to be, or do we know how we're going to implement those? I imagine that's already been captured in the planning. So, you know, cost short and long-term, a parent like me who stares at a screen with a blank look on his face, and how about the, you know, this, if you will, the 5% of students that might need special things?
So, to answer your questions, in terms of parent information sessions, we've actually timed the rollout of student email to coincide with parent conferences.
Great.
One of the things we're hoping to do is to start getting information out to parents in terms of internet safety and digital citizenship, because it is a partnership with home. In terms of costs, this partnership with Microsoft is a program which is extended to students at no cost in terms of the online internet tools and collaboration tools. So there are, at a high level, the costs are minimized. At a lower level, there are some costs involved with, you know, administrative oversight and filtering and things like that, but it's very minimal. And then in terms of accessibility, one of the things that Microsoft is very strong at is providing built-in accessibility tools, screen readers, text-to-speech, low-vision experience, some things that are all built, they're built in to Office 365, but they're also available on all school computers. And we consider those kind of a regular ed accommodation, so those are available to all students regardless of disability.
Great, thank you, Aaron, very much. Thank you. Thanks, Bruce.
Welcome. Other comments or questions?
Another job well done. Good luck.
Aaron, I've got one comment and question.
Sure.
My last one, I promise.
Mm-hmm.
So, in my line of work, when we hear schools talk about anytime, anywhere learning, they're usually talking about a device, not a set of programs and competencies, so I give you credit for that. A lot of school districts, very famous school districts like Los Angeles, have spent literally a billion dollars on giving every kid a device and not giving any thought to the curriculum usage or anything like that, and those programs fail. The other reason why those programs fail, and this is the segue to the question, is that they usually don't have a professional development component. Here's the device for every kid, one-to-one, anytime, anywhere learning, good luck. I'm sure you guys have thought through this, but can you just comment on thoughts about how you'll train teachers for this?
Sure, so the, two of the professional development activities we've held this year have had sessions relating to both Office 365 to get teachers proficient and using the tools for both educational, business continuity, and for instructional purposes. And then in our last session, we started to talk to teachers about the rollout of student email and how they'll support students, whether it's providing instruction on internet safety or assisting students with learning the Office 365. And then, too, we have the High School Advocates Program that we're just starting this year in terms of, it's our students that we find are already proficient in these technologies and pick up on these technologies very quickly, but working with students to work with staff collectively to explore instructional opportunities together. So those are, those are three ways we're looking at providing the professional development. Thank you for this.
Can I also add, the technology integration specialists are amazing in terms of being able to smooth over or enhance the learning that's given in the professional development because they are right there in the moment to provide the teachers with the extra support that they need. Some people get it in one, some people need two, so what they're doing is utilizing the Office 365 platform to provide ongoing, authentic instruction. For example, today, Julia Greenstein just sent out screenshots of how to add the pen tool onto Microsoft Word so that people with their board could utilize that. That goes to everybody, but they have to know how to use the OneDrive in order to get that. So it's ongoing, embedded professional development that's within the context of a regular day. So that's another piece that is, I think, extremely important and I now see, because we did not have one last year, the huge benefit of having that ongoing support for these professional development sessions and workshops that we have. It's really important.
Absolutely, too, and I'd be missed if I didn't mention the follow-up modeling and coaching program that we've, we've been able to implement with the instructional technologists around these activities. So it's definitely, it's been great and, as we've discussed, it's embedded into this. So we've actually built our, a lot of our professional development around the OneNote notebook or the OneDrive to use to share professional development materials.
Great. Well, like Steve said, Aaron, we're glad you're on board and it's nice to see the principals right alongside in this commitment to technology, so whatever you're doing to drag them along, good work.
I think, I think it's more like we just follow them and stalk them and-
Aaron's garden, right, we all live in Aaron's garden.
He's quite popular at the moment.
Great update, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you very much. Great job.
I guess I think about, a lot of the teachers are already using tools like Edmodo to be communicating.
Yes.
But this'll give us a standard approach, something that we can filter, something that everyone will have access to.
Yes, and they may still be using that because they can put a lot of their presentation material, or they may switch just to using OneDrive and OneNote. So it'll be interesting to see, but I think this is, this is an opportunity for us to provide the same platform and the same tools to everybody, staff and students, so that we're all learning in the same environment, and I think it'll just be much more productive and efficient. So looking forward to seeing what teachers can do, but I know some of them already do that. But as they pointed out, if you went to the professional development workshop and using it yourself and you just want a few tips as to how to get your students using it, that's what our tech integration specialists are for.
I think having a systemic approach makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Tina?
No, I would agree with that, the systemic approach, but I think Steve made a good point about parent involvement, too. When you said Edmodo, I know parents can set up their own Edmodo accounts. I get notices from my children's teachers about, you know, extra credit projects and this and that, and it is important, particularly I think with the grades five through eight, that parents be able to ask their children the right questions, and I like that teachers will be able to very easily find their students and communicate with them, but particularly in middle school at the lower grades, it is helpful to be able to support your child in their education and ask the right questions and say, you know, "Did you understand?" Or "Have you done what Ms. so-and-so asked you to do in the email she sent you?" So I don't know how that plays, how, where the parent component comes in there because we do like to check up on them once in a while, or every day sometimes.
I call it stalking in my house. I stalk my kids.
I call it supporting one's child, but my children might call it stalking.
You're much nicer than I am.
No, actually, my children call it nagging. That's what they call it. But that's just something, that was one thing I was thinking about, so Edmodo is very good for that.
I think we'll have to explore some of the nuances of it as we get it rolled out, but we're pretty much ready to go and...
Great.
Excellent.
Terrific. Thank you. Good discussion. Okay, continuation of the discussion on high school athletics.
Yes, I'd like to invite Diana Myers-Pacla and Caitlin Brown, our athletic director, up to the guest table.
Caitlin had so much fun last time.
Yes.
Couldn't wait to get back.
Dragged her back.
This is what you do when you're not actually working here.
I was betting that you had built in enough sitter time to do a drive-by for the soccer team.
Well, I'm not calling my husband after this. He doesn't know how long the meeting goes for, so I can do a drive-by the boys' soccer team. He can handle himself, fingers crossed again, so. Thank you for having me back. I appreciate, and I hope that the information I provided can answer some questions for all of you. In terms of the league, these are the high schools that responded to me in a timely fashion. I reached out to the entire league, but most of the athletic directors were very, that day that I did that, were very responsive just to understanding the amount of athletes who participate in spring track. And after reviewing that and looking at the numbers and the ratios, you know, I would be asking to have one additional coach for both boys and girls, to have a shared coach for the boys and girls. To be conservative, I don't, you know, I think that would really put us right in the middle of the rest of the schools, and that is what I'm looking for after, you know, discussion with, you know, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, so maybe just a quick reminder for the public if they didn't see the last meeting, but what Caitlin has given us is a list of ratios of students to athletes and where other school systems, especially in the area of track, how many coaches they have for the number of students that typically participate in a broad array of track activities. So this is, I know, an issue, I think we talked about safety last time and just being able to provide the right coverage, right?
Yeah, I think what was helpful is we talked a lot, and Caitlin was, I thought, very informative about how track, whether it's winter or spring track, is a little bit different in nature as to some of the other sports teams where the groups stay together or at least in the same general area, that you've got students on multiple different events requiring different types of coaching, actually. And especially when they're out running, there are some students who do only the events that aren't short or long distance, and they need somebody there. So it's just a different, it's a different animal than some of the other sports are, and as a result, we felt that not only the additional supervision, but the additional, I will say, more customized coaching for some of those other events is what we're missing. And so our main reason to bring this forward when we started looking at this in the spring is to create, is to create a better balance when we looked at our ratios. So these winter track, spring girls, spring boys, with the three, and we attached that to this so that you could see our participation rates last year, and those three areas were our highest ratio of student athletes to coaches. And curiously enough, they are the sports that require more of an array of types of coaching in a different locations. So that really stood out for us, and that's why we came to you with the proposal last time and why we're back with more specific information about that. So even with the additional spring track coach, which I will compliment Caitlin, I think is a really good compromise to what you saw the last meeting, it still would put our ratio of 29 student athletes to one coach, which is right in the middle of what you see as the Hock-Mock League. So we're not asking for anything, I don't think, unreasonable. Right now, we're toward the higher end of that range. This would put us right in the middle and, but would be reasonable in our view.
Yeah, and again, just for public benefit, looking at those numbers, Debbie, you talked about currently with the one coach, we average 40 students to one coach for boys and 32 students to one coach for girls. So just for the public listening, that's a big responsibility.
It is, and we have more and more kids going out for the sport. So that was last year. It could even be higher this year if we don't address it.
And if we look across, we look across the other sports at FHS, I mean, that's clearly on the high end, so...
I have one question, and I hope it's not a silly question, but do the boys and girls track teams go to the same meets? If you're sharing a...
Yes, they do everything together. It's a very, if you've ever been to a track meet, and even when they, the coaches coach, they don't specialize just, "I will only coach boys." It's, "I'm a distance coach, I'm a field coach, I'm a jumping coach, I'm a sprinting coach," so they have the boys and girls together and working with them both together. So they're very much a together, both a female, males.
Well, then I think this is a really practical, great compromise, and I appreciate this information, though, because it puts it right in context and perspective, so thank you for that.
Well, I know, I thank the athletic directors from around the league who were so responsive to me. I really appreciate that. And I'd have to give Mansfield their athletic director, they have seven coaches, and they share that seven, they have three coaches for the boys, three coaches for the girls, and then they share a seventh coach. And so they were the ones who really gave that idea that we could share a coach, and I think our coaches will find that effective.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussions for Caitlin? Katie?
Well, yeah, I think that it's nice to see kind of a compromise of, and really looking at how we can share the coach, because, you know, then you look at it and you say, okay, well, the salary, you know, the addition will be $3,300. And again, I think that we just need to be mindful because $3,300 here, $3,300, I mean, it all multiplies. So I don't think it's unreasonable, given the calculations that you made and where we would fall, which would be pretty much center, but I think it's also worth noting that there are, you know, four communities that their ratio is higher.
Yes.
With this addition. So as always, we're trying to kind of, you know, place Foxborough kind of in the middle where we're doing better than some, not doing as well as others, but in terms of the resources, but still, I think it's reasonable. And again, the safety issue is obviously a concern, so I think it's a nice compromise.
Yeah, and you bring up the cost item, $3,300 incremental to this year's budget, but as we know, we're running in good position regarding the budget and have confidence that this will not be incremental to our total budget approved. So I know that gives us confidence. And any other comments? Motion to approve Caitlin's recommendation?
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Caitlin, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, and I'd like to, again, congratulate all the fall sports teams, and also Liz Holmes won the coaches' state meet with the best time overall for cross-country on Saturday. Liz Holmes, so she, this is, she's new to cross-country, and so she won, and she had the best time overall in the 5K.
That's exciting.
She did very well this past weekend, so we look forward to the state meet, and hopefully the boys are winning right now or started the game, so...
Two-nothing.
Two-nothing, okay. And they've had an incredible...
Wonderful technology.
Yes, and then our girls' field hockey team won their first game out in Stan Burns Community Field and unfortunately ran into a very strong Dover Sherburne team, but had a tremendous season, so.
Great.
Publicly, I'd like to thank them since I'm not around. All right, thank you so much.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Thanks very much.
So we should give a shout-out while we're transitioning to Frank, who's running the cameras for us tonight, because I know he'd rather be over at the high school fields with Mr. Everson, but Frank, we appreciate you supporting us. You got that score update, right, Frank? Okay. Continuation of approval of overnight travel. Ms. Myers-Pacla.
Hello again.
Hello.
So you'd asked a few questions, and I went ahead to find out as much of that information as I could. So you do have in the packet the information on the travel company and where they are out of and their address and that they can be found online, et cetera. And then I also did put out a survey question on Survey Monkey, and I did speak to Ms. Benelli about it as we went back and forth on it. So the one question, the question was, "I would consider this trip as a possibility for my senior with a section for parents to be able to comment or ask any questions or whatever it might wind up being." So as of Wednesday, you have the totals that are there. As of today, with the survey being cut off, there's just an update in the numbers, it is actually at a 29 to 29 yeses and noses tied out of a total of 58, and there were no other suggestions or questions out of what was already there that I had also shared with you on this. Well...
I don't take 29 to 29 as bad. I don't think it had to be overwhelmingly favorable. To me, I read that as at least half of the population, or roughly half of the population, would value that potentially as an offering.
Mm-hmm.
And I view it as another offering of the school system, so...
And some of the noses were not, some no one answered, you know, they just said a yes or a no without saying why or giving an indication. Some of the noses were, "We're already going on the music trip," or "We've already got a trip planned." Some were, "No, but we would have considered it, however, we've already got a trip planned." Or, "No, I think it's expensive," or "No, it's just not something that our family would do." So even the comments were kind of back and forth, just depending upon what it happened to be. There were a couple of suggestions of other places to visit while there, but, and so that was a nice little thought that was there as well.
Comments? Go ahead, Katie, then Tina.
Thank you for this information. Certainly appreciate that, and I guess it's all in how you look at it. So Bruce, your perspective about 50% said yes, 50% said no, they weren't interested. So I'm just gonna go back to what my concerns were at the last meeting, which was the lack of educational value on this, and my thoughts really remain the same. I know one of the things that was discussed was the issue of the value of bonding, a bonding experience, which absolutely is important, but I think that there's other ways to meet that bonding experience, and I know that the seniors have the all-night graduation party. I know in the past, they had a black and white dance.
They will again.
And I know they have senior week. And so I guess I'm wondering if there could be a way for the students, along with their advisors, to increase those bonding experiences during the senior week and really collectively figure out a way to maybe create more memories here in Foxborough or somewhere in the near vicinity, because I don't want to diminish the value of a bonding experience by any means. So that, those would be my recommendations. I think that, you know, the cost is, you know, is just another factor, I'm sure for some families, certainly to me, $1,600 to $1,750, and that is, depending upon airfare, is very costly. So, but I think that the true, the true concern of mine is the educational value of this. So those are my thoughts.
Hmm, that's good. Thank you. Tina, and then Steve.
I just, I know, I had asked you about chaperones the last time, and you said it would be teachers. I was just curious if any of the administrators were going, vice principals or yourself?
Yes, I thought that at least on this very first one, I would take myself as a chaperone. It's based on 30, a minimum of 30 students to go, and that would be for three chaperones. So I pretty much have three people who have shown an interest that are out there without even going out far, just like, "Oh, my goodness, sign me up." And so I thought that my part would be, I would go down as a chaperone, but not a part of that piece of it, but yes, a chaperone.
Thank you.
I'd be very happy to do that.
Well, thank you.
Steve, and then Mrs. Benelli.
I love travel. I think everybody should travel. It's terrific. I wonder if it could be put off to the summer. I'm not against the trip at all. I think as a parent, again, personally, I just couldn't swing a $1,600 trip, and if I was putting out $1,600 or, in the end, it's gonna be $2,000 when you start putting pocket money in a kid's, for the kid to go. Is there any sureties this organization has to make sure we don't lose any money, as we don't, as we go to deposit money towards the trip? But that's for the logistics, I guess, of the administration if we go forward. I would vote to have this, but I really think it would be better off in the summer, to Kate's point, Katie's point. And I just don't feel like it's something that we're screaming to have the students have, but see the world, I'm all for it. If families can afford it, that's fine. I just think it's a really cost prohibitive number for a lot of people, but I wouldn't, I would vote for it if the board wants to go forward, especially to make sure that it's in the bubble of the administration, safety, insurance, all those things. So I guess I'm going back to my AdCom days, that 29-29 is a no, but if we're at 50-50, then we have a horse race here. So however it goes is fine with me. I would vote in the affirmative to have it, but think it should be put off in the summer and would like to see some sureties that the money's protected while we build up the payments.
This is actually a great discussion because I think we all represent different interests and ideas, and if a motion's put on the table here at some point, it'll be interesting to see how we vote, and, you know, we don't always have to vote 5-0 either, so...
Right.
So I think it's, you raised some good points as we consider it, so Debbie?
Yeah, I mean, whatever is the committee's desire, Diane and I both want to say, it's fine. I think, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this from the time Diana first said that the high school wanted to bring this forward, and I've also been thinking about it, not just as a superintendent, but as a parent. And I know it seems like something really new. I certainly respect the idea that it doesn't have as much educational value as all the other trips that we sponsor, whether it's to Spain or France or London, or the music trips, which are multiple. I mean, so the school already sponsors a lot of trips, so I don't see the liability for this any different from any of the others, or the safety, security. You, as a committee, already sponsor, out of the country, I mean, four that I know of, that I can think of off the top of my head, trips with students that are school-sponsored that leave the country. So to me, Florida seemed not as much of a worry, to be honest, as students getting on an airplane, going somewhere, and so that's where I was coming from. I also saw this from a perspective of, you know, there are some students who excel at some things, whether it be music, whether it be a world language, whether it be an interest in theater, and they have the opportunity, just as this one would be, where, you know, any family, travel, travel is expensive, whether it's school-sponsored or a family's, or a family idea, you have to decide if that's something you, as a family, want to invest in. And I don't think that makes it any different from a family deciding whether to go on a vacation or letting a student go with another family, as sometimes happens, that another family invites them, but they're gonna pay their own flight. So I don't view that as any, every family has to make their own decision, which I completely respect, as to whether this is, if they feel it's reasonable, if they feel it's affordable, if it's something that they want to sponsor. I totally get that. But from a parent perspective, I know this feels really new, that you're used to the trips that you approve typically annually, that feel comfortable and familiar, but this is not a new idea to Foxborough High School. So my children aren't that old. They both went on school-sponsored tours. They didn't go on either of the exchanges, they didn't go on the theater trip, and my daughter did go on some band trips, but our son went on a tour, I think it was a junior, actually, of London Paris and Rome. It was a tour sponsored by a tour company. Other high schools were in the same group, and I believe he met his junior prom date, actually, on the tour from another high school in Massachusetts. So, you know, that was something we decided, both of our children had to put in some of their money from babysitting or whatever if they wanted to go. So families, I think, can have those discussions about how much a child wants to participate in anything that school... in anything that's school-sponsored that is extracurricular or exciting or an opportunity. And they can decide how they're going to do that. Our daughter went to Costa Rica. Mrs. Lord was one of the chaperones. So that was a tour with a tour company.
During a vacation.
Exactly like this, except neither one were Florida. So I've had our two children participated using some of their own money, which we said that's the deal and some of ours, to go out of the country with school-sponsored chaperones. And I would say both are some of the most memorable memories that they have of high school. And so I, I think as a parent, that is something a family decides. It is an individual decision. I don't think whether, you know, people think it's affordable or not is a family decision. And people look at that differently. But I don't, I, from a parent perspective, we did used to have these kinds of tours sponsored by the school where we opened it up. So it's not as new as it might feel. It just hasn't existed in the past few years. But we do sponsor all kinds of other things where kids are leaving the country and leaving our town with chaperones from the high school. We've had pretty good success.
Oh, we've had excellent success.
On that, in terms of how our students understand their responsibilities, the chaperones understanding their responsibilities. So the more I thought about it, actually, the more I was in favor of it, I will say. Just from my own personal perspective as a parent and a superintendent. And I think that for the kids who don't excel in some things that we already provide, the annual trips, this, this is an opportunity for them where they, they wouldn't be the students going on the exchange or they wouldn't be the students going on the band trip because they're not a member of the band.
Or they might, or they might be.
Or they might be. But I think this opens up that idea of a school-sponsored trip to students who don't fit in the, in the things that you are comfortable because you've already sponsored them.
It's an opportunity.
It is an opportunity. And I, I don't feel personally that I want to judge some opportunities different than others. And I know we've had great success taking kids' places and bringing them back. So I, the more I've thought about this, actually, and even since your last discussion, I know there were reservations, so whatever way it goes, it's fine. But I actually have grown more comfortable with it the more I think about it. That's just me.
Debbie?
This is during a vacation. And I think people have a right to choose how they want to spend their vacations. Some of the noes came through, even though you think it's a neck-to-neck race. Some of the noes came through. They already have travel plans for that time during vacation. So people are already making their own travel plans. This is an opportunity where a family could not go, or maybe two members of the family could not go, but one of the family could. It would create an opportunity to, you know, for perhaps some extended family members to give a small graduation gift towards this. I mean, there were all kinds of nice family things that could come out of it, which allows one person to travel because that, they can't afford to have more than one person travel. So I will definitely vote in the affirmative for this.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that, that we accept this because they need to work on it now. They need 30 and they will guide that very easily. If they don't get 30, a commitment of 30 immediately, it's a no-go anyway. So I do think it's an opportunity we should offer. So I'd like to make this one.
Before we have a vote, could I ask one more question?
Sure. Or we can second it and then have further discussion if anyone wants to second it, or you can.
Go ahead, sure.
I'll second Ms. Lord's motion.
Any further discussion, Steve?
Do we need to put this out to bid to make a better price? I love to haggle. And I only see one, one company making one pitch. And please don't think I'm working against you on this because I'm not, okay? But if I was, if I was going to do this, and to Bev's point, I think it's a great point. And to Deb's point too, you know, if I took advantage of this opportunity, the first question to ask is, how can I get it cheaper? And how can I get mubang for my buck? And why not Liberty Tours and Acme Tours or, you know, whatever.
Because they don't offer this particular tour.
Oh, there's a ton of tour companies that offer a ton of tours.
Well, my motion remains on the.
I'm not fighting it, I'm just saying.
No, 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 I'm just saying, my motion remains with the background that I have on the success of this tour, company running this tour, that I, my motion is that this move forward.
And I would just interject that because private parties are paying for this as a trip, it's not a government contract, so.
Then I was unaware and I'm sorry. I withdraw my question.
I'm going to read Diana's mind and ask her to follow up. But this is a travel company that Diana has personal experience with. And that, to me, meant a lot. So it's not just the cheapest company, but it's a company that has successfully brought high school students from her previous high school to, to places and back. And that, that means a lot to me, that this is a company that she personally has experience with.
Yep, brings credibility all over the place.
Was I reading your mind?
That's part of it, yes. They've been working with Middleboro for at least the last 10 years. And they also helped to facilitate, as I had noticed, as I had noted here, or did facilitate, the Massachusetts delegation for the National Student Council Conference last summer. They're very, very flexible. This is not a packaged program, this was, what do you want to do and how do you want to do it? And, you know, do you want this with that? Do you want to make sure lunches are covered or would you rather have this happening? So they've been very, very flexible. The good news that I'm really hoping for is that Southwest hasn't, which has been one of the airlines that had been utilized quite a bit in the past. They have not yet expanded out through April. That's going to be happening in the next three weeks where they'll be opening their calendar up. So again, with, if this is approved with a parent night very, very quickly and a deposit down, I'm hoping that that negotiation is going to take place with a better price on airline. This is on the high side because we want to make sure that we could cover all. And, and they've been very flexible with, with anything that I have asked them for. So my hope is that this number will go down if anything, but I wanted people to be aware in case it didn't, that this is what we would be looking at for.
And I did like that, at the last meeting, you, you mentioned that all the food is covered.
Yes.
Which I think is really important because that speaks to the out-of-pocket money that you said would be on top, because we're really just talking souvenir money.
It is, and the airports coming and going.
I like the fact that all the students' meals are provided for. I feel, I feel like that's a good feature that you, that you demanded that I think makes it easier to travel with groups of students.
So we have a motion to approve. And a second, do we have further discussion? Go ahead, Katie, yeah, go ahead.
Just, I guess the one thing that I would just kind of, I think is kind of an interesting thought is that Debbie, I know you spoke a lot about things that had happened in the past. For some reason, those things ceased. And, and this district stopped doing that. I'm not sure of the reasons for it. So this is something that is, in terms of the intent of, the reason for this trip is, is, is a new way of looking at a, at a trip outside of, be it, you know, outside the country or, you know, be it foreign exchange program, be it the other programs that we have. So I would just caution maybe the committee just to think about that. But I know we're under a time, some time constraints. I will be voting against this, but obviously majority rules.
I think you raise a fair question, Katie. It does beg the question, why did we stop if we had it at one point? I don't know if anyone knows the history.
Why do we, why do we drop a sports team? Because the interest at that time is no longer there. Now, if we don't get 30 students, this will not fly.
I mean, what if some people might have some institutional history?
Oh, I do.
I'm even going to look, I'm looking at Shannon in the back because she takes the kids to London. So we have three people in the room actually have a lot of experience taking our high school's students elsewhere, so.
Shannon, do you want to, is there anything you want to jump in with before I?
I think everything that's been said has been well noted.
Any institutional history on why some of those things?
Yes, I actually did do the touring with students to, to Italy. And then that became an exchange program in a, with a couple of years. I also did a ski trip with students to Innsbruck. And that morphed itself into, again, an exchange program. Couldn't do them all, so it wound up becoming something different. I think Bev probably, not speaking for you, but Costa Rica may have been a one-year or a two-year.
Well, yeah, Costa Rica became a substitute. It was the Gulf War that people became very upset. They didn't want our students traveling over to Europe. So to keep the enthusiasm and the cultural awareness of a Spanish-speaking country up. I went forward with the idea. There were responses, so we went to Costa Rica.
I think we've had good discussion. And I know we've had several people join the audience who are here for a, a future topic. And I want to be respectful of their time. I don't want to cut this short.
Is a motion and it's been seconded?
There's a motion and second, and I don't know if there's further discussion. I know, Joe, you're in favor of the trip, right?
I know, I have a question about it.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, we did, what were you guys saying about doing this over the summer of 2015? If we can't do it in the.
That was just an, that was just an idea, Joe, as a possibility.
Like say for instance, like say if we did, would the next year's graduating class be able to go on it? Or just the past year's graduating class?
If it was done in the summer?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we were voting to do it in the summer. I think right now, Joe, we're still talking about spring vacation.
But would juniors be able to go?
No, not this year.
You'll have an opportunity, I think, Joe, down the road. So I'll just offer my quick two cents, then maybe we can vote. I was concerned initially, and I think we're all conservative in nature. But I do, over time, I guess I feel the way the superintendent does. I see this as an opportunity. I don't know how it could be better controlled beyond the principal going and calling this a school event and holding the students to school standards. The superintendent's in favor of it. I don't know as a parent whether my kids would participate or not, but I think irrelevant. I think the point is, it's another opportunity we can offer to our school kids. So I know personally, I would vote for it, but that's just my two cents. Any further discussion? Anyone need to be heard on anything? All those in favor of the motion? Those against? Four to one, it passes. Thank you, Diana, for all your time. Katie, I think your points are well taken. Thank you. Yep, I think it's.
Certainly report back and let you know.
Excellent discussion.
Thank you both.
Great. Okay, Foxborough High School proposal for changes to attendance policy.
So this is the night of Diana Myers-Packler, so we'll invite her back up to the table along with Ms. Christine Melova, who, as you know, is a math teacher here at the high school. Thank you, Christine, for being here. And I know you don't have anything else to do on Monday night. So I'm going to turn it over to them to explain a little bit of the background and why this is coming before you and, and try to summarize the nitty-gritty of what, what it entails.
Okay, I'll do a very quick intro. Last spring, a group of teachers had come forward to ask, well, teachers and staff in general, the faculty, if they could take a look at our attendance policy and, or attendance procedures and what we do regarding, or how we do with students, particularly seniors, as they start to roll into that kind of end of their senior year. And do I really need this class? Don't I need this class? But also just attendance in general. And so with absolute yes, go with it. They formed a faculty representative group and I'll let Christine take it from there.
There were representatives from every department, including art and guidance. And it came out loud and clear that we needed a change to the current attendance policy. The current attendance policy, I was on that original committee with Rich Pearson and Ruth Lynch. That's how long it's been. So I think it's, it's definitely time that we get something that fits our needs. So that's what we did. We pulled from other, we pulled from other attendance policies for neighboring schools to kind of find out what they had. And everybody brought to the table what they liked, what they didn't like. And, and it was, it was a great meeting. And this is what we got.
The people at home can't see what they have in the packet, so could you just summarize a little bit about what's the change?
The change, the current policy right now is 14 absences per school year for a full year course. And that was designed to encompass all absences. There was no delineation between excused and unexcused. You had 14 absences to do with what you wanted. And beyond that, then you may be in jeopardy of losing credit for a class. It has evolved into excused and unexcused with doctor's notes and 14 personal days. And that's how a lot of the kids are looking at it. So it has created a little bit of a disruption, especially with the seniors, that they're, they're marking off their days, knowing how many they have left to spend. So that came out loud and clear, that we really needed something, a little bit more structure. So we came up with an attendance policy, five unexcused absences. So that means, you know, we weren't feeling well, stayed home, but not sick enough to go to the doctor. So apparent note that we know that you stayed home, but it was an unexcused absence, five per term. And then when it hits the sixth unexcused absence, then what goes into effect is not loss of credit, but an N grade. And so if after the student finishes, let's say, term one, gets six unexcused absences, on their report card will show up an N, meaning that they did not abide by the attendance policy. Then they have an opportunity to buy back that grade second term. And if they abide by the attendance policy, their original grade is reinstated. If they don't, then they get a 59, failure due to attendance.
So they have a, if they don't meet, if they exceed the unexcused absences in one term.
Correct.
They have an opportunity to redeem themselves.
Yes.
In a way that they manage their own responsibility.
Yes.
And if they then choose not to, then that's, that's a good lesson in life now, isn't it?
Yes.
So N basically stands for no grade.
N stands for no grade.
So are you saying then, one term, they hit the six, they get the N. The second term, they have to be five or under?
Yes.
And as long as they stay within the excused absence? No greater than five?
Then their first term grade is reinstated.
If they had an 80, it will stand as an 80. If they had a 70, it will be, okay.
But if they don't, they get a 59 and it will say N. And then that's their grade due to the attendance policy.
And that's the unexcused.
Unless it's lower than 59. Unless it's lower. The grade remains the lower grade.
And again, we're not talking total absences, we're talking unexcused absences.
Yes, unexcused.
So I'm just curious how, and you probably don't have this information. You know, what's the percentage of the student population that this applies to? In the sense that we're having students that are having unexcused absences? And are we really understanding what those unexcused absences are? Because as you know, you know, students come in with a lot of social, emotional issues sometimes that impact their ability to learn or, or impact their ability to be in the classroom. So how are those kinds of issues being addressed as well? So one, what's the, what's the number of students that this is really affecting? And then two, you know, what are we going to do for that other group of, population of students who we know may not have the M.D. note to give you, but we know they are struggling in some fashion? And is it going to be so black and white that, you know, we're, we're not going to be addressing that, you know, population of students that are having a hard time with, or that, that are struggling in the classroom and therefore are not going, coming to.
We're well aware of those kids that are struggling. And that's certainly not, this attendance policy would certainly not be held against them. You know, the goal is to get them to come to school. So.
Right.
No, we're well aware of that. And that's, that was not our intention. I think what we really needed was, we just really needed some more structure for the, for the average kid who says, oh, but I have six days left, so I'm going to be absent one day a week for the next six weeks. And so.
Like the expiring coupon.
Yeah, exactly.
Our absences, we're, we're a school that's very high as far as attendance is concerned, 90 plus. I don't get that number right off the top of my head.
Like 97.
And we did take this to school council. So there was a, because we have to do that as a part of the process as well. But in that conversation with two students there, as well as faculty and town and parents, everybody really felt the same way. And, and our discussion of it, including a person who sat on the committee, who's also on school council, stated absolutely not. Those students that we know that are struggling, that don't have that support at home and we're never going to see a doctor's note, we're never going to see any of the above. Truly, we're pretty much on top of those students. There could be a one that falls through the cracks, but I really doubt it. Guidance does a great job with that. And our teachers are well aware and our building-based support teams, I think, really work toward that. So, and if somebody came forward and just did the, you know, oh my God, I've never told anybody this, but we would certainly be responding to that as well with it. This is going to impact not a high number of students at all. But I think really, and from what I was hearing, both from Christine and members of the committee, was it's really to get our students to change their behaviors. They need to be responsible for work. Yes, you have sick days. It doesn't mean that you use them all, you know? They should be used for those purposes. And what not a better place to start than here? And that's why, although it says excused absences and it doesn't say administrative approval, that's where that would come in, where we know from guidance that there's something else that's going on. And no, it is not all that black and white. We just wanted to give some examples of what would be considered. You know, we know that in some cases, there are religious aspects. We may not wind up with a. You know, we know that in some cases there are religious aspects. We may not wind up with a note coming in, but we're aware of who those particular students are. You know, and a student may be out for three days with the flu. And if we are definitely aware of that, that may well fall into, doesn't have the doctor's note but was home. I know there were years when the, you know, the physicians were saying, don't even bring him in. This is just what it is, you know, and they need to be out. So it's taking that into account, but being very mindful again of it isn't the freebie. And in some cases, for students, I mean, it's five absences every single term for four terms. So they really have a couple of more than what they have now.
Than what they had now, yeah, what we have now.
Yeah, but it's just, it's just much more structured. I think it's going to be, one of our other concerns was that the paperwork was a nightmare for the secretary who handled the attendance paperwork. And so there's got to be a better way to really implement an attendance policy that really fits what we need now.
What I like, I find it very, very fair, but what I like about it is the redemptive possibility that you have built in. And you know that there will be some students who push the envelope. But it also, there it is. You want to change that? It teaches them the responsibility of themselves, right?
The importance of being in class.
Absolutely. I think this is one of the best policies I've- Red.
Tina?
I have a couple of questions. The old policy has a process for notification, and I just didn't see anything like that in the new policy. I understand the paperwork issue. I'm not trying to add an extra layer, but, you know, if you have a few orthodontist appointments or doctor's appointments, and they're kind of random times, and it just so happens that your kid has missed algebra five times, but not five days of school.
Those notes will come in. So, you know, if you're looking at something like an orthodontist appointment, and they come in and they have that note, it goes in the file. And then what we will know, the teachers will know when they check the attendance, that it was an excused absence because they got a doctor's note. We talked about whether, about the notification piece, and it does say in here that it is a student's responsibility to keep track of those absences. However, we're also hoping that maybe at some point Power School should be able to send out some sort of an automated warning.
Yeah, I like the idea of having some kind of warning in there. I'm sitting here, I know my son's only absences were an orthodontist appointment. He missed your class, Ms. Melova.
And I didn't send a doctor's note in, but you can bet I'm going to get one.
But it's just, I can understand if someone misses a chunk of days, and it's a whole day, and they're absences. That's pretty easy to track, but it is a little random sometimes with these appointments.
Probably a pretty small population that are going to miss repeated, you know, five days a term. But I really, I do hesitate that if we have to start sending out warnings every two or three, you know, every single term.
I would like to see if there's some way to automatically notify parents through Power School though. So, I mean, I check, I'm a stalker, as we talked about before. I check these things, but not everybody does. My other question was regarding, the letter said you plan to pilot this. What does that mean? Is it going to go into effect and count, or is it?
Yes. So what we wanted to do, we wanted this to go with, the teachers would have liked this sooner, much sooner rather than later. What we would like to do is we would like to start this in January. We'll go over this with our students through roar or huddle. We'll do this through an email blast of all of this information going out to parents. Certainly, they can respond back to answer any questions. So it would start at the beginning of the second semester. So it's two terms. Everybody kind of rolls into it. We see if there's anything that we need to do to adjust before it goes into the handbook with that major change coming next year into the handbook.
I do know, and I don't do this, but I know there are parents who do plan vacations outside of the school vacation time. And I think that they may already have things planned, and they may not be happy with this change for that reason. Would we make accommodations for that, given that there was no notice prior to the school year that this was coming down the pike?
One of those things we're hoping for parents, too.
I mean, I know, I know we discourage that.
I want to say, that's what a pilot's for.
Yes, that's what I was hoping we were going to say.
So that we can see what issues we run into and what issues we don't.
Right.
If that's, if that's the case, and it does affect a student, then they won't have any trouble in the fourth quarter redeeming-
Correct.
That grade. So I'd say let's see what we uncover, and that's, I think it's great to try the second half of a year and see what kinks. So I'm going to go out on a limb and say we probably won't have an automated parent notification until after this year, where we see how it works and what the glitches are. And then we can certainly explore that over the summer.
Tina, I think Tina raises a good point. I mean, because, you know, you have, vacations are planned, and, you know, at least, at least if, you know, the beginning of the year, the kids know.
Right.
Hey, I can't go, I can't be absent this many times, or, you know, I need to be concerned about that, so. And then parents are aware of it, too. So I think we need to have some flexibility.
I mean, I'm hoping, I'm going to go on another one. I hope parents of high school students aren't planning vacations during the school year, because it's really hard for a high school student to manage that. Never mind a first grader. But especially in high school, I think that it's a disadvantage to your children who really have, you know, that's really anxiety-producing to have to make up that much work. So I certainly hope parents aren't. I don't think we're going to run into that big problem, but I could be proven wrong.
And I would just say that we've never penalized a student for a decision that a parent has made.
There you go.
That's good to know.
So, and can I also just put the plug in?
Let's be reasonable.
That there are snow days. So if we can kind of look at the end of the year as five days beyond the last day of the school year, it's a huge help, because we do, it seems like we always have, you know, snow days every year, and it's usually at that very end. And we do have folks calling to say they're going to here or the camp starts or the-
That's something new. That's a great reminder, because that's a great reminder for both staff and families that our official school calendar includes the five built-in snow days. That the official calendar that you as a committee vote on, that they should take the end date with the five snow days seriously in terms of what our actual official school year is.
Don't go away before the final possible day.
Absolutely. And if we had ended up for some crazy reason, having more than five, that will not be held against anyone at all, because that's not the official calendar.
And we accommodate, but.
So I would love to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we put into motion the pilot program.
Second.
In.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I would request that at the end of the year, we receive feedback.
Oh, absolutely.
Gets implemented for the following year, as to what the challenges were, what the positives were.
How many students are affected?
Yep.
They'll be monitoring that very carefully throughout.
And just before you do take that vote, for one other comment, with the change in attendance law and attendance policy, we do have to follow this very closely, and teachers are reporting to us. So it will be finding that mechanism by which we can get out to parents. And as we said, we're hoping for automation at some point, which will be coming, but.
I would just chime in one more time. Again, Power School stalker, but I would encourage parents to check Power School every day. And if they find there is a mistake, I, my own son was marked absent from a study hall the other day that I know he was in, and it's been taken care of. But just in case there is a, someone comes late to class and, you know, misses attendance, you need to follow up on these things to help out as much as you can.
All those in favor? Five-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Compliment all of the faculty. You put a lot of time and thought into this.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Just a quick question about the attendance. I was wondering that. So would they get detention or G-holts if it happened or suspension?
I think they have to go sit in Ms. Melova's class.
If it doesn't say it in the policy, Joe, then it's not part of it.
Like say if you were in school on a field trip with that, would that-
That's excused.
You'd be okay.
They're all, everything's covered.
Joe, it's only something that's unexcused.
Oh, like what? Like what's an unexcused?
Well, if you disappear and you don't have an excuse. Right? Okay. Okay. Well, I'm glad we are right on time for all of our visitors.
Well, look at that.
Who are here.
That's good.
So thank you to the committee for that.
It's very interesting to sit here and watch people fill in our audience portion of this meeting, rather than deleting.
Ms. Spinelli, do you want to kick this off, or are we going right to Dr. Burdos?
We are, I just want to compliment all the people who worked on the MCAS analysis and the baseline and benchmarks report, because it, we take our academic achievement very seriously. I am, continue to be proud of the fact that we have multiple measures of how we define success as a student. They work on this really hard. They work great together as a team. I'll turn it over to Amy to introduce everyone, although you need to move a little bit farther forward, all of you. And I especially want to compliment the team and Amy for using our new collaboration tools to get the report done. So I'll turn it over to you on that note, Amy, but compliments to the method that you achieved the report this year, not just how detailed it is.
Let me intercept it on the way over to Amy.
Yes.
Just to comment on something you just said, which is, we are very academically focused. And in as short a time as I've been on the committee, it hasn't always been quite that way. Not to this degree, anyway. So I want to thank you and Amy for your continued leadership in this space. I know it's important to all five members of the committee and all the parents, so thank you for what you do.
All right, so we do have quite the crowd. And to get started here, just for the audience at home, because I know all of you know them, Mr. Paul Sharptier for the Science Department head, Ms. U. Carl from Math. Ms. Shannon Wazalowski is new to us as a department head this year, so we welcome her for English. And then Ms. Lorraine White for the Guidance Department. She wasn't listed on the agenda, and that was my mistake. She definitely knew that she was going to be here.
She couldn't stay away.
And we've met frequently. And then Ms. Allison Mello and Ms. Diane Casili as well. We're going to start off with some of the general information that was in your packet, and I have that up on the screen. Actually, I need to take the paper off. Thank you very much. And we're just going to kind of use the document to scroll down as we talk a little bit this evening. But we do have multiple measures, and there was a lot of conversation when we met together as a group, face to face, about some of the data points, because we do have so many other assessments. And what are some things that we wanted to see about even adding that would be relevant? So one of the things that you'll see is ACT data, in addition to SAT data. And then next year, this is going to look very different because of us piloting the park. So there's going to be a lot of information that will be new next year. When we looked at the data that's here, we're in the interim piece of our goal. So as you know from last year, MCAS does not have three-year goals, but many of our other data pieces do. So what we're going to do this evening is talk about the analysis piece that they've done with all of the teachers to really dig into the different baseline and benchmarks, as well as MCAS, and what they really see as highlights, talk about current initiatives that are taking place, and really talk more about some of the specific and ongoing improvement efforts that are taking place across the district and within departments. And I think that as you listen carefully, you'll hear of things like really increased emphasis on collaboration between regular education and special education, and looking at all of our populations of students. So in speaking about populations of students, if you look here at the introduction, we have 2,746 students in Foxborough. And then it has the numbers listed, 867 at the high school, 850 at the Ahearn, 341 at the Borough, 400 at IGO, and 268 at Taylor. We currently have twenty English language learners. Out of those twenty students, we have nine different languages that are spoken, Arabic being the highest percentage of students there. And our ELL teacher works in all five schools with all twenty of those students. As far as looking at a budget, I think we've talked a lot about a good value for your dollar in Foxborough. We're below the state average as far as per pupil expenditure. The information that we're able to receive from the Department of Ed is always a year behind. So FY13 is $13,775 compared to the state per pupil expenditure at $14,021. When we look at some of our more general statistics, looking at our number of students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch, that's stayed very consistent over the last three years. If you look at those numbers right here, we're at sixteen and three-quarters percent district-wide. If you look across the five schools, pretty consistent. I think the Ahearn is where you see that two percent increase each year, that that's really more of the fluctuation that you see. These numbers are based on actual percent of students. So if you were to look at the Department of Ed as an example and their census data, you would see a lower number because of it's done every year by census. This is our actual numbers from our food service department, to give you a more clear picture. When we look at our special education population, it's stayed very consistent. We're a good, about two percent below the state average as far as special education population. And I think that that really is contributed to, when you heard about building-based support teams and looking at our students, and really the support mechanisms that are in place within all of our schools to have that consistency over the last several years. That's kind of a general, big picture of our population. We're going to talk more as far as the MCAS and then all of the other different measurements that we use. We decided to talk the high school first, so we're going to have that conversation and talk about math and ELA and things such as ACT, SAT, continuing ed. And then afterwards, we'll move to the K-8 level and move to Allison and Diane. So any questions over that part first?
Nope, that's great.
All right, so then we'll move on to the high school, and Shannon, start with you.
We are thrilled to say that last year, ninety-eight percent of our students were, achieved a rating of proficient or advanced on the MCAS, the LA portion of the MCAS, which is above the state average of ninety percent. It also shows an increase on the last year's average, which was ninety-five. We had four students who had a rating of needs improvement and one student who-
Amazing.
We were very excited with those numbers.
Only four that would need, four.
Four, four students.
That's amazing.
That is.
Congratulations for the hard work that goes into-
The department has worked incredibly hard. We have tried to focus more on writing skills and critical thinking skills and bringing those into the classroom, making sure that we are each doing that, and making sure that we are emphasizing those skills within the classroom. I think we see that in the results. We have started bringing in some argumentative and research writing to kind of connect with the common core requirements. So we should hopefully see the same sorts of results when we start doing the park exam this year. We have worked with the special ed department so that we can make sure that all of our classes are working on the same skills and that we have all of the students who have been identified as possible risk of failures on the MCAS are targeted and have, and receive very good preparation for the MCAS. This year, we have added, almost half of our teachers in the English department have been trained in the John Collins program, so that will easily facilitate the transition from middle school to high school. We've already seen that really take effect. The students are, they understand where we're coming from when we bring in some of the skills that we're teaching, because they've seen them before. We have created mastery lists for each grade, and so we know exactly what skills we are targeting for every grade, so that we know by the end of the year what skills we want each student to have mastered. And so we're kind of focusing on those writing and critical thinking skills in the classroom.
That's great. Thank you.
And just a point, a note here, when you see, Shannon mentioned ninety-eight percent of our students, and the ninety-six percent you see here, when the Department of Ed reports out those percentages, it's all of our students, including our out-of-district. So when she says ninety-eight percent, that's the students that are in our high school. So that's why you see the discrepancy, but we make sure that we report all of our students that are out of district as well.
So that means students that go to, say, a private special education placement that we still own as a student in the high school. Not people who choose to go to a private school, they don't take it.
Right.
But any of our students who attend an out-of-district placement due to a disability that we can't-
Accommodate.
Accommodate here, their MCAS results fold back into our high school, even though, even if they're not educated here per se, because they're our students. So that seems like that would be one.
Yeah, it's usually really small.
Based on that.
Okay, so in math-
Congrats.
Yeah, good job, good job. In math, we've got eighty-eight percent of the students, again, scoring at the proficient and advanced level, again, above the state average of seventy-eight percent. We were very excited. Sixty-two percent of the students got an advanced, which is a really incredibly high number. And we were able to decrease the number of students that have- And we were able to decrease the number of students that failed. We're down a percent from last year. We had four students overall. So our needs improvement category went up, but because we were moving kids in the right direction, so we were happy with that. We've been working on formative assessments and really targeting, what do the kids know, small increments, daily basis. The department has done a lot of work on that to really try to target the individual skills. We just finished an analysis of the MCAS this year as a department, so we know exactly what we want to watch for as we do the formative assessments and what to work on. Also, like, English, we too are working with special ed again. We've tried to target some teacher pairings to work together, who can learn from whom in terms of a particular lesson or a practice in the classroom, so that we can, we can get all of the kids up to that proficient level. That, of course, is everybody's goal there. So we're sort of steady-as-she-goes at this point, small improvements at the two lower categories, but that's what we like to see, and, you know, as always, we're working on moving people up.
Great. Also, too, with your department, if it's not half, it's close to it for the number of math teachers that have taken the John Collins Writing Course.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, we didn't do it this past year. Thank you for bringing that up. We didn't do it this past year. We actually, the year before, we're at about half that have taken that course. So we also incorporate writing, which really helps.
That's above and beyond.
The school as a whole, the writing across the curriculum, we're all really working towards that, and we can see it in their results.
Absolutely.
That is above and beyond.
Yeah.
I'm willing to bet that the average school system in Massachusetts does not require that or challenge that, or create the opportunity for their math department teachers to do that.
Well, we did it, it was great that it was offered here, and then a few of us took it and came back to the department and really talked about it, and then another group went out to take it. And we really think that it makes such a big difference with the open response and getting all of our students to try those. Those are typically an area where students have difficulty. They don't like trying to explain their math, just, they just want to solve it by an equation. And those open response questions, they do have to do some explaining and be able to talk about what they're, what they're doing. And that's coming on PARC as well. So having taken that course has really helped us, helped them with how do you communicate, how do you get that information down.
Now, I want to know that statistic. How many other high schools have a whole, almost 50% of their math department having taken that?
Well, some.
Some.
It originated as a high school program. John Collins was a high school teacher.
I know, but have your math, but have your math department taken it?
But there are many districts who use Collins K through 12. So I can't just speak to that. And it's, we, you know, I'm just smiling, I'm sorry, I have to say, because the Collins program was brought here by me in the late 90s. That's how long it's been here, but for K through 8. So I do think that it works, as Sue said, to define, for students, it's a structure about to recognize what's expected in an answer. So if it's a type 2, for example, is a correct answer expected. And that's very different from some of the other things that they're, that they're asked to do sometimes. So I just think, all it is is a structure, so that kids learn kind of a routineized way to psych out a question and to understand what's required. And then it's up to them to bring their concept and skills and level of understanding forward. But I think many high schools do use this. It's just that we hadn't here. So I will give them all the credit, because it has not been a requirement here for high school. And I really give these people a lot of credit to being forward-thinking, because they are the type of people who say, gee, you know, we haven't had it in high school, and it hasn't been required for high school, but if it works for kids, we're going to try it. So that's what I see in them, and I want to make sure I honor that, because that's, that's exactly the quality that we look for in people. So that's great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It's helped.
In science, our students are still performing extremely well, well above state averages. Number of students passing on their first attempt is still over 95%.
That's exciting.
To steal a couple of the words that Shannon used again, we were thrilled that we only had two failures on the MCAS this past June, which was a passing rate of 99-plus percent.
That's incredible.
We had a tiny little increase in the number, in the number of needs improvement students, but I really think that's because we moved several of those failing students up a little bit, you know, into needs improvement, so now hopefully we can continue to move those students up. I think maybe we have a synergistic type of thing going here, because, you know, Shannon, again, mentioned critical thinking and, you know, writing skills, and we've taken on a few new initiatives lately as well that have, you know, I think, helped ourselves and hopefully helped folks in English as well. I mean, the writing across the curriculum initiative Jeff Theodos put in is well established now. Every science assessment has some sort of writing component. You know, no test is strictly memorization and multiple choice, there's always some sort of writing component to it. We've initiated about the last three years a lab notebook program where all students keep a lab, a lab notebook, which is sort of like their journal in science. And they come, you know, they come to class on lab days, they're very well prepared now, because they've actually taken the time to prepare their notebook for the experiment. They're much, and it makes it much easier for them to be reflective once they can finish the experiment and start to analyze their own data, because they've thought about it beforehand. And also, we've amped up the number of inquiry activities in all science classes to try to take some lab experiments from all courses and make them less cookbook, make them maybe a little bit more open-ended. I mean, we're not going to say, okay, here's a box of chemicals, have at it, but, you know, but it's, it's, you know, chicken, yeah. You know, it's, it's really classified as more of a guided inquiry type of process, where we give them some kind of, some guidelines, some hints along the way, but, you know, they're thinking much more critically, I hope, as a result of that. Where we go into the laboratory and we try to impress upon the students that we don't normally know what's going to happen. And so then we take what happens and we try to make some order, make some sense out of it. So again, we're just trying to make our students better thinkers, I guess, and it's, it's not easy sometimes. Really, you know, stretches their minds a little bit to think like that, but I think it's working out well for them, though.
I think that's something that we're seeing sort of across all of the departments, that critical thinking and that real, that real stretch, which we all benefit from.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
AP, okay. So I just wanted to speak quickly to the AP tests. If you, when you look at this, you'll see how many more students are taking AP courses than ever before, which I think is fabulous. So we in Guidance do encourage them, but their scores really don't have anything to do with us, it has more to do with what you guys do. So, but if you, what we're so impressed is, is now we're up to 303 number of tests administered. Last year, it was 299, and as you go, it was 215, but also the number of students taking AP classes. If you look at 2008, we had 115, now we're up to 238. It's all about college readiness. So I think that the more students that can take AP classes, the better off they're going to do, and statistics, statistics show that. We increase, we just increased a couple AP classes. We have AP Psychology, and that has a lot to do with the increase in number, and now we have a new AP Art class. So I think that the numbers will just increase. One of the benefits of the AP Potential Night also is looking at students who have the ability to take AP classes and encouraging them to take those. So we do have an AP Potential Night every year, which goes from the PSAT scores and looks at the students and see who could possibly take an AP course and be successful, which we say is having a three or better on the AP exams. So I think that the statistics, statistics kind of speak for themselves.
Laurine, one quick question if I can.
Sure.
That number of kids taking AP is so dramatically higher than the run rate. Do you attribute that to anything in particular?
Well, we, we saw a need, and then we addressed it, AP Psychology. We had a lot of students who wanted to pursue that, and we didn't have the class offering here, so we had a teacher who...
So that's the big bump.
Yeah, we had a lot of students who did that, so that's where that came from.
Thank you.
And I'm thinking it's going to be, again, we had the AP Art, and again, saw the need and addressed it, and so that will increase a little bit more as well.
Thank you.
So, so part of it represents, just to clarify a moment, part of it represents more kids deciding they want to challenge themselves.
Yeah, yeah.
And part of it represents they were offering more courses.
Right.
Both, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Great.
And with, I'm sorry, with the AP Potential Night, what's so great is we send letters home to the parents, and they, I guess, some of them maybe never even thought of their child maybe as taking an AP class, and it really showed them, your child can do it. They just need to, you know, follow through on their work and so forth, and I think that's the increase as well.
What do you think, the one thing, though, that's a little concerning is the drop in the percentage of students scoring three or better, from 86% in 2013 to now 74%.
Right.
And that, obviously, you need that score, that's what you just said, that is an indicator, obviously.
Right.
So do we have any sense about what...
That many more, that many more people are taking it.
Yeah. And I'm going to...
So that, that will relatively be a corresponding number.
Well, but if you look at 2011, we were at 77%, and there were 117.
117.
But we're still...
Well, that's only, yeah, but that's only two, two more than a 200.
You know, we talked a lot, a few years ago, I know when Diana came, we were at this table talking, speaking about how we're going to expand AP and open it up to students. Before, it was very closed, like, if teachers recommended it and said you could probably do it, you get in. And other, and there wasn't really a lot of student choice. If they, if they might not have been that typical profile student, they were shut out of it. So now, there really is a mechanism by which if kids want to try it, they can. And at the time, I remember discussing the fact, which typically is the trend, that as you open up AP, that we have to accept the fact that we'd see our scores dip a little bit, because more kids we wouldn't let in before take it. And that, that trend is very true if you look across high schools. High schools that AP is very closed and by invitation only, high schools where AP is, is wide open, you tend to see that trend. I think the fact that we didn't see that trend until this year was admirable, because I was actually surprised at all these last couple of years we've been doing it, that we continued to see a growth in, in the percentage of students who scored three or better, because that, that bucked the trend, if you will. So I'm not surprised that in one year, we're seeing us go with the trend. You know, because I think it's been amazing that we haven't seen a steady downward, actually, is, which is what was predicted in the average score, with more and more kids taking it. So I don't, I don't look at one year as, as a bad news piece, because that's what we expected two, two to three years ago.
Maybe that's also...
Am I doing all right, AP people?
Yeah. Well, I was just going to call it, a couple of years ago, there was a great article about the power of the two, and a student actually taking the course and understanding the rigor of that kind of a course before they go on to college, and that, yes, they scored a two, and that's not considered a passing grade, and college is more accepted, but that the student learns so much from that experience that, you know, we need to be careful about being so quick to judge the two. But it was a good article.
Yeah, for some students, the benefit of AP is a delay. I get emails quite often from former AP chemistry students who maybe got a two, but then they're freshmen in college now, and they're saying, wow, chemistry is the one course I don't have to worry about, because the second time around, maybe I didn't understand it too well with you, but I really understand it now.
So the benefit isn't necessarily that they're going to have a college course that they don't need to take their freshman year, but that, in fact, they're getting prepared in another way, so when they actually take the course, maybe they wouldn't be doing as well if they hadn't had that. But I think the other data that's kind of interesting there is the number of AP students in 2013, 140, but the number of tests administered, 299, which speaks to what you were talking about, Debbie, that there was probably a certain group that took multiple AP classes. Now we have 238 students, and the number of tests administered, 303, is...
That's, actually, I'm glad you pointed that out. So it, it appears that last year, you had the same students taking probably two AP courses each.
Exactly, right.
And now you have more students taking it, but most of them taking only one.
Right.
And about half of them only taking the second.
Right.
So I think that's a really good way of looking at it, actually. So it definitely shows you the population taking it is different.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I do agree with your point about the power of the two, is that it's, it's for the students that want it, to have a college-level experience, whether the college will count it as credit, is neither here nor there for some of the kids. It's to, to challenge themselves to have that experience early, so that they're better prepared, so it doesn't hit them like a Mack truck when they get to college. And I think that for the students who want that experience, it's great.
It's also going to help them get into colleges, different colleges as well, because those grades come out later.
Absolutely.
So what's important is that the schools are seeing that they're challenging them, and they could be doing well in the class and may, maybe just don't, not do as well on the actual test. So it seems like a win-win all around.
One of the other things, too, just to add, and I, and I don't know if Laurine is even prepared to comment on it, but when we look at, like, the students that received the John and Adams, Abigail Adams Scholarship, that's capped at a certain percentage based on their performance on MCAS, but the Coplex Scholarship, which gives them the same benefit for the tuition at a state college, if they've taken an AP course and performed, it allows more students to have the ability to go and receive that as a scholarship.
Yeah, and the other thing is, so, thank you for bringing that up, the Coplex this year. So the Adams and Abigail is 25%, you know, so they have to score on the MCAS, but they also have to be the top 25% in our school. So that number stays about the same, depending on how many kids are in the senior class. But the big increase this year was the Coplex. I think we, again, I think we had about 60 last year, we have 97 this year. So our kids are doing so well on the MCAS that we have about 150 students or so that are eligible for free tuition in state schools in Massachusetts, out of a class of 230. So we're doing really, really well. So that number is increasing, and a lot of it is because of the...
150 out of 230.
About 150, out of, like, 230.
Wow.
Are eligible for the state tuition for a state college, yeah. Because the Coplex does have the same benefit as the Adams and Abigail, it's just you have to prove yourself in a couple more ways, like, you have to take a couple AP courses or take the SAT subject tests, or do, there's a whole list of other things that you can do. But you do get the same benefit.
So that's, and that's one thing, I know parents might receive their letter at home if they, their child has been awarded that scholarship, and then they get the Coplex and think, why do I need that? It's really those that are below that 25%, it really widens the opportunity for kids.
That's great.
But I mean, that statistic, it's well over...
I don't know. Isn't that amazing?
I know.
Okay, SATs, you know, again, you know, we encourage kids to take the SATs and the ACTs, but the hard work is in the departments with the scores. But we are, we're doing great, and we continue to do really well on all aspects of the SATs. The ACTs is something a little new that we put into the report, because we really want to encourage all of our students to take both the SATs and the ACTs. You're going to notice the numbers on the ACTs up here, they're a little bit below or just about where the state average is, and that's not our goal. We want to be higher than the state average. But the reason is, a lot of students, if they do well on the SATs, they're like, I don't need to take the ACTs, and they just move on. So usually, the kids who decide to take the ACTs are the ones that are struggling with the SATs, and that, that's really not the way it should be. We really need all of our students to take both and see which test works better for them, and then maybe take that one a second time. So that's one of our real goals this year, is to try to get the students to take both on their junior year and see where they, they fall.
So Laurine, what are we doing to, to get that word out?
Okay. So in all of our group guidance classes, we're really promoting it and letting them know, it's going to be spring of their junior year. So that's when the push is going to be a little bit more. So we're going to be sending letters home, we're going to be meeting with the students and actually giving them the dates and say, I want you to sign up and so forth. All we can do is encourage, but we really think that the numbers are going to go up significantly.
Yeah.
If we get the word out to the parents of the benefit of taking the ACTs, as well as the SATs, we need to get the parents on board, because this part of the country, our mind is set on SATs, and it has been, you know, for a long time. We really need to have them have the switch that both are equal, and colleges accept them totally equal. we need to get the parents on board because this part of the country, our mind is set on SATs and it has been, you know, for a long time. We really need to have them have the switch that both are equal. And colleges accept them totally equally. And a lot of people don't know that. So we have to get the word out to the parents as well as the students.
I was going to agree. I had one of those, did SATs, he did great, I don't need to do ACTs. So I think educating parents. And honestly, I thought, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because, but there's, and you know, the other piece of it too is that a lot of colleges are moving away from SATs. But you, you need to, you know, depends upon how to educate the parents.
Right.
Yeah, to get them on board. Because don't forget, there is a cost. You know, again, with ACTs, SATs and kids have, you know, often take these tests more than once. And so I think just to make sure the parents are on board and they understand.
The parents, it's, if the cost is, and then the students are like, another Saturday.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, I was going to mention that as well.
So we need to let them know that it is important, those three hours, it's still important. And it was, when you were talking about the SATs too, which we'll have to mean another time, because I think everybody's aware that the SATs are changing and it will be affecting our sophomore class. So we need to get the word out to the parents on that too and how those changes will affect their students and so forth, so.
There's always some change going on.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. So continuing education, again, it's been about the same. The difference is always, it tends to be the military, to be honest with you, is every year it's up and down. Workforce is about the same, kids that go onto the workforce is about the same. But some years, we just have a lot of students who decide to go into the military and other stu-, other years, we just don't. So that's when, every year, that's seems to be the big change. Yeah.
I can think of a number of them that stood up at graduation.
This year, this past graduating class, it were, I thought, a higher number.
Absolutely. And I'm, this senior year, we're, we're getting a lot as well, so.
This senior, coming senior year.
This coming senior year, we seem to have a lot of students who want to take, go the military route. So it's just every, you just never know. So, so that's the difference in that. But we still have, you know, a huge percentage that go on to, you know, two or four-year colleges, so.
You know, I had something that I thought was exciting and wanted to share under other. But if we're talking about the military right now, could I slip it in right now? We have a student, former student, nineteen ninety-six, his name was David Henson. He is in the military. He and my son have just connected in El Paso, Texas, where they are both saying, and this David Henson is a doctor in an aviation unit at Fort Bliss. And in two weeks, he will be going as a doctor to West Africa to help with Ebola. So people are always proud of what former Foxborough High School did. And the two of them happened to find a Patriots Fan Club sports bar. Yes, and Bill said, we, we were very interesting because we came from Foxborough.
Oh, yeah.
But we'll focus on his military.
What a great story. But isn't that, isn't that, I just thought that was great.
Any other questions for the high school? That's our, that's our high school piece.
That's my high school update.
And, and to Debbie's point before with the OneNote and the OneDrive actually, it worked. It was awesome as far as, we were all on that one document. And we met face to face and talked about the things that, you know, we were seeing as departments and kind of shared with each other. But then it was a matter of, we were, it wasn't like in the past where we were emailing the document to each other and, is this the most updated version or is this? And it just, it really worked well.
Wonderful.
So I thank you, all of you for that piece.
The more I listen to you, the more I'm going to quit the school committee and come back and be on your team.
So Paul and Sue and Shannon, thank you very much. And, you know, I, at least Paul and Sue may have heard me say this before. Shannon's maybe new, but when I was interested in school committee six or seven years ago, getting involved, I went and saw one of the senior statesmen here in Foxborough. And his comment, and I'll always, I always remember this, was that, you know, our high school is as good as our department chairs. And I thought that was an interesting comment. So we don't see you often. Thank you for what you do.
You're dismissed. Did I get dismissed? Usually, they dismiss people, don't they?
Lots of data at the K to eight level, not that we have all of it in here. So they will give the highlights of where we are within this interim. There's a lot of areas where we're already meeting our goal, which is still another year away. And then there's other areas where we're really on track to meet that goal.
So if you guys need a water, it's been a long night. There's some in the oven that haven't been used, if you want to grab one.
Thank you.
Yeah, how'd you, how'd you guys draw the short straw and have to go second tonight?
We're usually spoiled. We usually get to go first. It's okay.
They, they get up earlier.
My comment about the department chairs goes to you guys too, of course.
Thank you.
You know that. All right.
All right. So on the screen, we're looking at MCAS data for grades five through eight. Our MCAS scores for English Language Arts have been pretty consistent across the past several years. You can, you'll notice that ninety percent of our eighth graders scored advanced or proficient. We had eighty-four percent of our students in seventh grade also scoring advanced and proficient. We had a slight decrease, oh, I'm just skipping ahead to elementary. Grade five performance remained the same, sixty-nine percent of students achieving advanced and proficient.
Did you want me to scroll to elementary?
I can wait and talk.
Okay.
And as you can see, it shows that students' performance on MCAS increases as they go through the school system.
Brutes, can I just-
I think it would be helpful, if, if you don't mind, to talk about the elementary. If, if, if the rest of the committee is okay with that, just because it just builds on-
Okay.
Where the, yeah, yeah, from the middle school, so. That'd be great.
And so if we look at third and fourth grade, it's been fairly flat with a slight decline of, of, of note is that in third grade, we actually did have twenty-one percent of our students scoring in the advanced category, which was a six percent increase from last year. So I thought that was important to note that. Over, and in third and fourth grade, we look at the long composition performance, or it's for fourth grade. Our performance on the long comp, which is assessed in fourth and seventh grade, has been consistent over time. This year, there was a slight decrease in the fourth grade scores and a slight increase in the seventh grade scores. And we've been working on, writing has really been, was our first focus with the new standards. We did a lot of professional development around the new types of writing and implemented that in the classroom. Then we also worked on revising our assessments to match the new standards. And then at the middle school, we worked on the writing across the curriculum, creating the assessments and creating rubrics that could be used in all content areas. So the expectations were the same for students. So that was, that's been a big focus that we've worked on. I feel like I'm skipping a little bit around.
Just, just guide me where you'd like me to go.
And we have it in front, so we can kind of jump through it too.
So now we're looking at the Scholastic Reading Inventory. This is another assessment of students' reading that we have, that we take a look at.
Page six.
Thank you.
So the rolling average for this year, there's a slight increase in every grade level. And we, we have either met our, our target, our benchmark goal for the, the two thousand and fifteen or on our way to meeting it. In grades five and six, we had implemented Readers' Writers Workshop, which helped is a model that emphasizes giving students, it helps build their reading stamina and their writing stamina and increases the amount of reading and writing that they're doing daily so they become more fluent with it. This year, in grade seven and eight, we're implementing the Writers Workshop portion as well to improve the stamina of our seventh, seventh and eighth grade students. And teachers are really excited about what they're already seeing, some of the daily writing that their kids are doing. It's, they're less hesitant when they have a bigger writing proj- project to work on. Go down to the elementary. It's on page eight. So the next set of data is for the elementary school. And this is our developmental reading assessment. This is a formative assessment we use and it helps us to find students' independent reading level. And you can see here that we had grades one, two, and four. There was a s- a small increase in the number of students meeting the benchmark. And in grades K and three, there was a slight dip, but it's been pretty consistent. The next set of data that we'll take a look at, these are our writing assessments. So grades one and two, we are still using our, the assessments that we've had in place. And we had an increase in the number of students meeting, being, meeting the proficient mark. And we are on, we've either met the target or met the target for both grade levels. Grades three and four, we have new assessments. So we impl- influenced the Common Core. We revised some assessments last year and piloted them. And then we found out that we didn't like them. We needed to go back and do some more tweaks to them. So this year, we have a new set of assessments that we're implementing, where teachers are assessing all three types of writing and focusing on units of study. For the, we're actually implementing the Writers Workshop in grades three and four. So they're using the new assessments to help inform their, their instruction. They'll collect some data on a baseline, inform their instruction, and then they'll assess students again at the end to see where their growth has been.
And that's, that's a really important piece too, that, you know, one of the changes with MCAS and PARC is, MCAS is, it assesses the writing in four, seven, and ten. And it's going to assess writing in every grade on the PARC. So all of this work that they've been doing with the new writing assessments and really looking at the rubrics and assessing all different types of writing is really going to prepare our students that much more.
So you, right, so you may be familiar, in the past, MCAS really only assesses in each grade level one type. So it always was a personal narrative for grade four. You know, name something you did on a snow day, you know, describe something you did on a snow day. So Diane, when you're saying that the third and fourth grade new assessments that you're tweaking and retrying have assessing all three types of writing that we expect in those grade levels. So just for purposes of education, can you name what those are?
Narrative, informative, and opinion slash argument. So they'll be doing assessments for each type of those.
So that, when, when they're assessed, whether it's PARC or anything else, that they should be, they should already know how they do with all three types and they have been able to improve their performance based on the assessment feedback.
Yes.
Is that new then?
It's, well, we, they've always taught all those different types of writing. But we, we've historically only had one type of assessment in each grade level. So I, I give Diane and her team a lot of credit for saying it's not enough to assess writing once, you know, fall and spring. It's, it's important to assess all different types of writing, that we expect them to become proficient.
So that's the new part, the, the different types.
Narrative, informative.
That's-
Argument, opinion. It's opinion in the lower levels and it transitions to argument. And we do it at the end of fifth grade. We have them start writing argument. And it's good for teachers too, so that they really wanted this, so they could see for each different type of writing, what is their focus for instruction need to be for each student that they work with.
Yes, great.
So the next assessment is, this is the letter, letter sound identification in kindergarten. And you'll notice that there was an increase in the rolling average. So there's three assessments here. First, they look at letter identification of uppercase letters, lowercase letters, and then can they identify the sounds associated with those letters. And I just wanted to point out that if you look at the, we had an increase in all three areas, but there was even a bigger increase in the letter sound identification. And this is, I feel is due to, we implemented foundations, a supplemental phonics program last year, which was a need that was identified through our Reading SED report. And so it's really given us a very systematic, consistent phonics program in K through two. And my first grade teachers have already said to me that their, their students this year seem more confident when they're writing, that they have the skills to be able to tap out sounds when they're stuck on a word. They're taking risks, using better vocabulary and just more confidence overall. So they're really pleased with the results. And just, and that's just one year. So we're really excited about that.
Yeah, that's some good numbers now.
Yeah, I was really happy. I think that's all of my data.
Did I, did I miss anything here?
So Diane, just to summarize.
So just to summarize.
Just to summarize, I mean, that was a lot.
It's a lot.
That was a lot.
We've done a lot of work with writing.
ELA, ELA is consistent.
Yeah, it's consistent.
ELA is consistent.
It's consistent.
And the initiatives that you've put in place, you can see different places where they're having impact.
Yes, and I think we still have work to do. So we've worked on the writing. We've revised the assessments in grades three through eight. Kindergarten K through two was focused on foundations last year. So this year, they're going to start looking at their writing, or we have started looking at their writing assessments so that we can develop rubrics for expectations for all three types and think about how do we want to assess in those grade levels. So that's one focus. We were implementing Readers' Writers Workshop in grades three and four because we want to help to build, it helps to build students' stamina and their fluency with reading and writing. It gives them opportunities, the instruction's very focused and it gives students lots of opportunities to practice whatever the focus of the instruction was, to gain mastery. And like I mentioned, seven and eight, we're doing the Writers Workshop as well to build students' stamina with the writing and to really investigate and look at author's craft and how do you, how do you craft writing? Not so much just teaching the grammar and mechanics, but how do you really make a good quality piece of writing? And that works, the Writers Workshop does that for us because you use a lot of mentor texts, look at, looking at how authors write and, you know, stealing or borrowing from them to make our pieces of writing or students' pieces of writing much better. So that's really our focus for the, the workshop model. We do know that we still need to go ahead and take a look at the close analytical reading. We're bringing the DBQs, the Document-Based Questions, into grades, actually, in grades six through twelve are incorporating those. That came out of the social studies review. And that's really taking primary source documents and reading closely. So we're, we'll be getting some more practice with that and instruction with that in those grade levels. And then I think I need to work with the lower levels to see how can we start that process. Not, it doesn't have to be primary source documents, but just looking at a piece of text. How can we begin to have the conversations with students, even as young as kindergarten? You know, how do you read closely and really think about how the author uses words to get their message across? So that's our direction.
Thank you. See, I always need that summary. After all that data, I can-
There's so much, there's so much that goes on.
There is so much that goes on.
You know, when you look at these numbers and then to hear, you know, you speak, Diane, about everything that you're, you know, the, the teachers are doing to support this, the results of the data, it's, it's just amazing.
I often describe it as a complex machine. It really is. But I also want to compliment Diane. She's the one that brings the John Collins course here every summer. And I think that's gone a long way if it's, if we offer it locally and conveniently and inexpensively, then you get more people, to your point, to be able to access that different approach that, you know, and we do require the program in the elementary and the middle school. But it's also allowed many of our high school teachers to explore what role it plays in their lives because of the work that Diane is doing. And that, that's where I've seen, you know, the biggest growth when it comes to that is the, is the partnership and the opportunities that she provides really does affect, you know, all grade levels. And they, they just work really well together, I think, these two with, with all their department heads that they connect with, really make quite an impressive team together. So I want to make sure I mention that, both of you.
And many of the middle school math and science teachers have taken it as well, have taken the John Collins writing. And just as Sue, Carl, and Paul mentioned, it has really impacted the instruction in the math and science classes too. And speaks to PARC and everything.
And the science and ELA teachers have worked together on some of those pieces of writing that they've done. So the kids know they're held accountable for every, everything that counts in English counts in science.
This is so exciting.
Mathematics.
Mathematics. This is probably my favorite year to come and talk to you because when Amy put that graph together, I was so excited for the teachers to, to see the work that they've been putting in is really paying off. We've been preparing for the last three years for this transition to the Common Core to really be assessed. Oh, yes, sorry, page five. So this, this data represents the first assessment that measures exclusively the revised standards. So our instruction has been building towards this for quite some time. So to see the outcomes of the changes that we've implemented in the curriculum and the professional development that has gone into it, the revisions of the curriculum, the different types of tasks that are being in the classroom. And to have that kind of data, especially when I show this to my fifth grade teachers, to see that in two thousand and ten, they were at forty-nine percent advanced and proficient, and now they're all the way up to eighty. They were really proud and really excited.
It's amazing. The middle school results in mathematics are really impressive.
Yeah, and we have some, you know, a lot of that is attributed to building-based structures that we have. Sue Abrams, as the principal, has, had given us more instructional time over the last several years. That has paid off. We have the support of the math specialist and a model that allows a special education teacher to participate in facilitating, you know, differentiated instruction with our students. So there are a lot of benefits to the middle school structure that really support this. The weekly cycle meetings that we have allow for much more PD. It's ongoing. We have great conversations. We're constantly updating our assessments and our tasks. And so personally for me, I was really happy for them. The other thing that's really important to note that this reflects is our sixth graders. So if you look at the sixth grade trend line, that is the red one, and the fifth graders also, they represent the first group of students who have had Think Math all the way through, from the beginning. And our seventh grade students had it starting in first, and our eighth-
And our seventh grade students had it starting in first, and our eighth grade starting in second. So to see the culmination of that program, I actually called the former director, because she was the one who brought it in, and congratulated her on these scores, because she didn't get to see this until the end. But it's really exciting to see, when you have a cohesive program, what that can do. That said, it doesn't have every standard of the Common Core. So we're getting to a point now where it's a little trickier, and we have to figure that out in the coming years. Moving to.
Just to give you another challenge.
Just, yeah, why not? We don't want to get bored around here. We'll go to elementary math on page seven. Just so we can stick with the data, I mean, the graph portion. On the top, you see our third grade trend line. And again, we had some really outstanding results in third grade this year. In one particular school, we had 96% of the students proficient and advanced, and they were just blown away. Yeah, and that team in particular had really worked with last year's data to identify amongst themselves where the strengths and weaknesses were and have a lot more of that collaboration about, you know, what are you doing that's so great and how can we all benefit from that? So that's the culture that we're trying to cultivate for everyone. In our fourth grade, I was not incredibly surprised that we had a small dip. It's not a very significant dip, but that test always is challenging. That said, we identified some very specific weaknesses in fractions and measurement that we're actually having a full-day PD release tomorrow, so that we can address them in the curriculum. Because you can't expect an improvement if you don't take an action to sort of change the outcome. So teachers have identified some areas, like I just mentioned in the Think Math, where that's not as strong. After the math review, we had supplemented, but we're not all the way there yet. So we're going to continue to keep working on how we can improve those scores. And the teachers are excited about that, because they don't want to have to be floundering around trying to find a resource to plug in a gap that they've identified. So we'll do that as a team and figure out how we can best bring our instruction up to par so that we can see our trend moving in the right way, because every other grade had an increase, so.
Can I just pause you for one second? Because I think that point you just made is really important, so I just want to repeat it.
Sure.
That a lot of people think about PD as only the days we have released, and we know we only have, you know, one left this year, and people think we missed those opportunities. But PD for us is a job embedded and ongoing. So what you just said was that you've, it's November 3rd, and you've already identified specific weaknesses in the basic program we use, because it's not, and it's no perfect program that's perfectly aligned, everything in any state, and that you've identified specific weaknesses in fractions and decimals, I think you said.
Fractions and measurement.
Fractions and measurement. And our meeting tomorrow, releasing teachers for a period of time, so that you can all work on what needs to be done differently and what, what you're going to be able to address using other resources, because it may not be in the main.
Correct.
That's what you're doing tomorrow.
Right.
So I just want to mention that, because that's what people like Diane and Allison do, is that we don't wait, we're not complacent, get right on it. And if we need to release teachers, which isn't our favorite thing to do, but if we need to, to do it early in the year, then it is addressed in a laser-like fashion, laser-like fashion. Because I don't think people realize that we do that kind of thing. And so I want to make sure I highlight that, because that's really going the extra mile to address things in a proactive way. So that our next group of students don't say the same thing, like, yeah, we see, we knew that last year. So I just want to compliment them, because that is what, the kind of thing that they do on an ongoing basis.
That's great.
There's been so many educators here tonight, I actually want to raise my hand. Could I make a comment?
Yeah.
Deb and Allison, to your point, you've used the word "we" a lot. And I think for the families and people at home, we have to also understand that when there's a, there's something that needs to be worked on, there's rapid response from administration, there's rapid recognition and thoughtful recognition from the boots-on-the-ground crew. But the families have to commit to. And I'm including myself there right away. Like, when I, when I hear fractions and decimals, I'm like, oh, you go fault, I can't believe I have to go back there again, right? But there's a community from home with the caregivers and the community, for crying out loud, too, that that's the "we," if I'm understanding it. Because it's really easy for, you know, people to go, oh, well, you know, that needs to be fixed. And I'm one of those people that whines about that here sometimes, right? But there's a "we" that's a community, I think. And I think tonight's been, you know, the greatest number-one hit of school committee meetings that I've been sitting.
Is number one on your list so far?
Well, no, we're, we're showing the town in this, in this broadcast tonight, all the things that's going on here. And it's not always beautiful and pretty and unicorns and rainbows, but it's, there's a lot of really good things going on here. But it has to be bidirectional, not just drop your kid off, hope that they get the scholarship that they get in senior year. So PD, we support you, and it goes both ways.
And I'm really glad that you brought that up, because this is a great platform to speak to parents, so I hope that they're all watching.
Yes, it's a good meeting tonight.
The team of, we have a little math team now, with our elementary math specialist and our middle school math specialist and myself. They've put together a tremendous compilation of resources for parents to help them understand how to better support their students at home. Because math is being taught so differently now, and there are reasons for that. There are reasons so that kids can really understand it, as opposed to just memorizing an algorithm. Because understanding it will help them get much further. So we would love to see an increase of traffic on our website, either through the elementary math specialist website or through my own website, to take advantage of those. We've produced videos explaining strategies. There are, you know, websites that we know will support the math and the way that we're teaching it in school, so that everybody can be on the same page. And a second grade teacher came forward last week to want a plan of math night for parents to get them going. And I said, and she said, should we wait till next year? I said, why wait? Let's do it now.
That's a perfect, perfect way to get you back to these numbers. Thank you. That's the type of stuff we need.
That's a good point.
Thanks.
So we will move on to page nine.
It's not a fraction, oh, thank God.
I didn't say page eight plus one, it's late. This is our benchmark data, and we have common assessments. That's something also that we didn't have several years ago. And these common assessments allow us to really check in that all the schools are having sort of a similar experience. So there is an asterisk next to kindergarten grade one and grade two, because we only had the last two years of data available. We've, we're constantly changing our assessments, so that they reflect the rigor of where we're headed with our national assessments, state assessments. So if you look, we're pretty consistent in grades three and four. There is a tiny dip in both, but I can attribute that, I know for sure. We have changed the questions to be more Park-like. So I think we actually were so thrilled with our MCAS results, and we said, well, our benchmarks, though, we weren't as fabulous. Well, it makes perfect sense, because we've made our benchmarks more like what we're going to see on Park, and MCAS is not like that. So that is the elementary school. And if we scroll down, that's the mid-year, this is the end-of-year. So all of our goals that we set, we are on target for. We don't have any real concerns. We just want to make sure, again, that we're ready for what the Park assessment's going to be giving our students.
Addison, before you go in, I just want to ask one question.
Sure.
You had said before, and just refresh my recollection, the elementary school is still using the Think Math, and Think Math is not quite aligned.
Yes.
To the Park question.
Correct.
So that might account for a little bit of the dip, if the questions are more Park-like.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting question that you raised. The Think Math program, in terms of how they ask questions, is actually very well-aligned, because they're open-ended, they're critical thinking. It's the content standards that are missing. So we've had to fill in some of the content, because things shifted, grade levels and things like that.
And this is the second year we're using the Common Core standards and the Glenn Coe program in the middle school? And how do you feel about that?
Correct, so, and thank you for saying that, because that was one of my things I didn't mention with the middle school data. That's reflective of, we wanted to see last year how our new program worked, and we saw very outstanding results. We were very pleased with that. So we know in the next math review, because that math review, we did get a supplement for elementary, but we needed middle school and we needed high school. So next time it comes up, definitely elementary will need it. And one other thing I didn't mention is, last year, for the first time, we brought in an outside person, an expert, Mahesh Sharma. If you look him up, he's very well-known in the area. We had, for our professional development days, as Debbie mentioned, we had professional development for K to five with Mahesh, and then we had it with five through eight. So the five got a double dose, but we had a consistent message from K through eight. And we think that really had a big part in what we saw in our results as well, so.
I also like to include educational assistance with Mahesh as well. Because everybody who's supporting students needs to understand conceptually how math is being approached. So I thought that was a good move.
Right.
Want to compliment the PD team.
And tomorrow, for the fourth grade release, that all of the special education teachers will also be joining us. They're a very important part of the team, so that everybody gets the same message. Okay, so are we ready to move to science?
Yep.
Okay, so, science, I don't think is in a graph, right? It's just the charts that I put in. So if we go to... Sorry, it's page six.
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, page... Six here, sorry. There's a lot of flipping today. Ha, thank you. So we look at our science. Science has, has to be the most frustrating assessment, because it's that cumulative assessment. And we were with the Department of Ed person on science last week, and I asked him, I said, can you tell me what it is that other districts are doing that you would see an improvement? What does their model look like? And he said, you know, I really can't tell you that, you'd have to call and ask them. I was really hoping, the new science standards are released right now, we'll be adopting them next year, that they would go to a grade-level-specific test, because we're going to have grade-level-specific standards. But it's going to remain a cumulative assessment, which is very challenging for our students. That being said, we have some exciting developments that teachers have been suggesting to sort of address. And for example, in fifth grade, where we're struggling is in the engineering strand. So we have a teacher at the middle school who suggested that we have a STEM Friday once a month. We just had our first one, it was Halloween. We did, they called it a STEM's Day plural, and each team had a small mini pumpkin, and they had to engineer a tower that would support the pumpkin. And that came out of a PD day that we had recently, where we went through engineering activities. So we want kids to be in a position to experience some things. One of the questions they did really poorly on had to do with what tool would you use to tackle this problem? Different types of screwdrivers, they don't have experience with that. So we need to find those experiences for them. Our eighth grade did see an increase that they were proud of. They were disappointed that it wasn't more, because they worked really hard to get the kids ready. Doing, the teachers did an open response question every single week for every single student, corrected them that night, got them back the next day, and really tried hard to prepare them. So they were pleased to see it go up, but again, they would have liked a little bit more. The ZINGE learning program that we use to help prepare students, they continue to use that again this year. And I think that what we're going to see come out of the science, we have the science review this year, so we're really going to be taking a look at our instruction. We'll probably be changing our model at the middle school as a result of the way the new standards are written. So stay tuned, I think in the next coming years, things are going to be a little bit different in science. Questions?
I'm just disappointed that it's, it's still going to remain cumulative test, because I think it's so challenging for young kids to remember cumulatively, especially in science with this, well, not especially in anything, but let's just think about science with the depth of the concepts and the skills to remember all of the units and all of the content in, let's forget K one and two, in grade three, grade four, and grade five, three full years at a young age, and then be tested in fifth grade, as fifth graders, on at least that three years' content, and probably more than that. I mean, I wouldn't want that as an adult.
Right.
You know, having taken courses over the course of three years and getting an exam at the end of three years. So it's really disappointing that they can't figure out a way to do the same as they do for ELA and math, which is to test them every year with, with certain standards. It's just disappointing, and our eighth graders experienced the same thing. All, I know they, they keep great science notebooks at the middle school, I want to compliment that.
And they, and they bring it at the high school level, because it's just biology and they can focus, and they get there. We know they get there.
So I don't understand why they'll, they'll continue with the, the high school exam is course-specific, biology or another thing if we chose it. But yet, our eighth grade students have to remember three years from six, seven, and eight. Our fifth grade students have to remember three-plus years. Doesn't seem logical.
It's frustrating, and the students have never had an exam like that, that's cumulative. That's really their first experience in fifth grade. So by eighth grade, at least, they kind of know what to expect a little bit.
Yeah, they've never had a science exam before.
Right.
And it encompasses everything they've learned up through fifth grade.
That's right. So it's a challenge, but that's certainly not an excuse. We want to do better, and we know we can do better, and we have some things that we're going to put in place. And the review will help us to target how we can do a little bit better. Because STEM's a big thing, and we really want kids to come out being prepared and excited about it.
Diane, Allison, Sue, thank you. I know it's late, that's a lot of, a lot of material. Amy, well organized, as always.
Great job.
It was a great job, everybody.
Well, thank you. You know, the support from the committee really helps us do our job, so thank you. And thanks to all the teachers who may be listening at home, because they are the ones who do all the work.
Good point. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
Wow. I don't actually know how teachers keep up with all the things that are changing.
I know, it's incredible.
Well, you know, but they have good support, people like Diane and Allison.
That's true.
And I was thinking earlier, you know, it's nice to see the math scores go up, because we can say that that's a good investment we've made with the math specialist that we've added and.
Although I have to say, there was no math specialist last year, so kudos to all the teachers and to you two, because that's really. I know.
That's a good point. All right, don't make that case then. Make that case next year.
But I think, I think you're right. I think all the changes that have been supported, whether it's the structure of courses, the materials, the programs, a lot happening.
Bruce, could I just make a comment? I think that, I know you're, we're going to be hearing from Bill, but I think he is saving some money, because it is cold here in this room tonight.
Oh, that's funny, I usually am cold in my room. I don't know what that means.
Are you underneath a vent or something?
I think so.
No, I agree with Katie, it's cold. I was wondering if there was a window open over there.
Our dollars are being well-spent.
It might be my personality, because I'm.
Just wanted to see if I can pay for something else.
Katie, we're trying to find the $3,200 for the extra coat.
Oh, okay, okay, there you go.
All right, Mr. Yucan, I know you've been waiting patiently.
Not a lot of changes here, so it's going to be pretty quick. The, we did pump in the two changes that you voted at the October 20th meeting for both the coaching and the high school initiative. And, you know, on the high school was $6,000, on the coaching was about $3,000. If we add the one change you just made tonight to these numbers, we actually will be down to about a $21,600 positive variance. Again, very, very early in the year, there's, there's, while we've accounted for a lot of things within salary accounts, you know, one of our biggest swings that happens during the year is obviously teachers going on maternity leaves or other issues where, where there's actually, you know, financial benefit to the community, because that will obviously drop our salary costs. The other side of it is obviously on the expense side. We've been doing pretty well this year so far, but again, we're just starting to get to the heating season. So that's, heating and lighting is really our two biggest ones during the prime season. So I, I will be honest, I'm not really concerned with our budget this year. I think we're in pretty good stead. And, you know, we've still been able to squeeze in a few other small things out of our regular budgets and accomplish those, which we obviously try to do every year anyways, within maintenance budgets and stuff like that. So still in good shape.
So just to reiterate, $24,000 to the good so far. And with your real-time math, even with that vote earlier tonight of that incremental coach that was requested, still 21K to the good. Yeah, that's great.
Would you like a motion to accept?
That'd be great.
Budget summary, as presented? I'll second.
For the discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero, thank you, Bill, for waiting and being patient, and then for running a tight ship.
Yes.
A creative tight ship.
Very much so.
Other matters? Why am I looking at you?
I always have things. So why don't I go last for change?
Well, we'll, we'll start at the end, Debbie?
Well, I've already said my thanks and congratulations to Dr. David Hanson, a former high school graduate.
Very good. Tina?
I'm good. I guess I just want to comment that the football team did great on Saturday night, but I also want to give two thumbs up to the cheerleaders, who are real troopers in some cold, wet rain. And also our band, who played their hearts out in some really tough weather conditions. It was good all around.
Speaking of great kids, I want to give a heads up, because we only have the different meetings, which is on next week, week from today. But on or about November 20th, I think that's the weekend, our drama club, our theater students are putting on A Doll's House.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't.
They've been working really, really hard. Gibson, yeah.
Wait.
And that's here at Foxborough High School.
Could you do the date again, please?
November 20th, day of the week is that? Is that a Friday, is that the day it starts? It's that weekend. Look for a message on the message board. But I'm, they've been working really, really hard. And they've been working really hard on the production, so I'm really looking forward to seeing that production. So I encourage everybody to look at the, on the school calendar for the dates of A Doll's House, on or about November twentieth or the weekend thereof. Okay, let's see.
I think the twentieth is a Thursday, Deb, just so you know. That's what I got.
Okay.
Yeah, today's the third.
So it might be.
Yep.
It might be Thursday, or it might be that Friday.
Yeah.
Twenty-first?
But it's that, you know, they...
Right around there.
That weekend.
On or about that weekend, I'm not, I didn't, I meant to go get, grab the exact dates, I didn't have it, I'm sorry. Our next meeting, just for the public to know, is a week from tonight, not on the seventeenth, because that's special town meeting. So next week is the joint budget forecast meeting.
Here.
Here, with the Board of Selectmen. That part, portion of the meeting will start at seven-thirty, and Bruce and I have been working with them on that agenda, but from, we will start at seven, so from seven to seven-thirty, we'll be bringing you a proposal for the PCC program at Stone Hill. We met today, that's called Project Competitive... Project...
Project Contemporary Competitiveness.
Contemporary Competitiveness. And it's really a summer program available to students. Right now, there are twenty-four member districts on the South Shore, and we are considering being the twenty-fifth to join the PCC family, and it provides, actually, the new update that I'm pretty excited about today, is that it's open to students during the summer who are entering grade nine, ten, or eleven. And they actually reside at Stone Hill during the week, and they, it's an enrichment and challenge program, they have an opportunity to take courses of their choice, it's a fabulous opportunity for families, should they choose, and we'll be bringing you that information, and we're going to have Dr. Ron Gerhart, who's actually retired superintendent who oversees the program here, to explain it, and along with a few graduates, not from Foxborough, obviously, but a few graduates of the program who will come to speak about it. Diana Myers-Packle has experienced Middleborough with it, and actually, our middle school assistant principal, Mark Crean's daughter went, went there as well. So we have a lot, and we're looking to see if the committee wants to support joining that partnership, so that we offer something else to people who may choose. So there's, it's all, there's all kinds of creative and high-level classes offered. So we thought, rather than wait, that we would use that seven to seven-thirty time, because the selectmen are going to be starting at seven-thirty, which was their requested start time. So we'll start a usual time of seven, hear about PCC from seven to seven-thirty, and then we'll have our joint budget forecast meeting with the Board of Selectmen, if that seems...
Right.
...okay with the committee, I wanted to make sure I went over that. And after the budget forecast, we're going to be discussing with the Board of Selectmen, or you will, the idea of the joint maintenance oversight concept. So that's a different kind of meeting, I want to make sure I explained it a week from tonight. And last but not least, I really want to thank the Hockamuck Area YMCA, and I want to congratulate them. The Hockamuck Y, as you know, is one of our strongest partners, and they offer a variety of things in, for our schools, and especially in our community. And one of the things that they are really known for is their Healthy Futures Initiative, which encompasses all kinds of things around wellness, school nutrition, nutrition education. We have two research studies that have been going on with them for the last five years on how students acquire nutrition education with pre and post tests, in the partnership with Boston University, that Dr. Quatermoni's been here several years ago, we still have that ongoing. They fund their stop-and-shop mini-grants for us, for school gardens we're looking into, for our salad bars, our smoothie bars. They also do cancer survivor, you know, wellness things, exercise programs. So they do so much around the concept of healthy futures. So very recently, they applied and were chosen to visit the White House this past Thursday, October thirtieth, and in honor of, you know, to recognize all the things that our Hockamuck YMCA does in its fourteen-member communities, not just Foxborough, and that, the recognition that they really go above and beyond in a creative way. And they were able to obtain a private tour of the White House kitchen gardens and a scheduled tour of the White House, and they invited thirteen local people to attend, YMCA employees, about a dozen children from all the member communities that, well, several of the member communities, and people who represent their partners. So I was honored to be included in that trip. It was a one-day trip, we went down early in the morning, and we came back in the afternoon. And so representing their partnership with schools, there were people there representing partnerships with food service, with Milford Hospital, with the Franklin Food Pantry, so different people represent their constituency partners. And I think it was really great that so many local families and children were included, and that was to celebrate their success of their Healthy Futures Initiative. So because it's aligned with First Lady Michelle Obama's Let's Move initiative, that was the whole idea of getting the trip to the White House to see her own kitchen garden and what they're doing with children, and, you know, what they're, what that initiative encourages nationwide, which aligns with the Hockamuck Area YMCA's Healthy Futures Initiative. So I want to, they're just really wonderful partners to us. At the first December meeting, they'll actually be here with a new, exciting proposal for us to consider, and I think they never run out of ideas for our community and for exciting new things for families and for children. And that's what the upcoming surprise program will be about at the beginning of December. So I just want to thank them. It was a long day, it was memorable, and I just want to compliment them on their recognition for how much they do in their communities.
Great. A lot of good information. So, next Monday, seven o'clock.
I will be absent.
We will miss you, I'm sorry.
I will miss you all more, way more.
I know you shared that with us before, yeah. Amy?
I'll sit.
Steve?
I'm good, thank you.
Katie?
No, thank you.
Bill? The only two I had was, I was doing some reading in one of my education magazines, and I got an article out, "The Business of Sports Field Maintenance." I'm going to hand it to Bill, I'm sure he already knows all of this, but it's one person's opinion of how to care for turf fields. The more we read, the more educated we get.
Love it.
And also from MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, we got a request to put a motion, or to make a motion, to adopt a motion, I should say, regarding our approval of MASC as an eligible arbitrator for us in collective bargaining. And rather than present that motion tonight, if it's okay with the committee, I'm going to hand this to our policy subcommittee and ask them just to read this. I don't know if anyone else got this in their mail, but we've been asked to pass a motion, so, and I don't think it's, from my layman's reading, I don't think it's a big deal, but I'm going to pass it if it's all right with everybody.
Please.
To Tina and Debbie to glance at, and then you guys can bring it to a future meeting. Have you, I don't know if you remember seeing that, Deb?
I did, I have it on my desk.
Will we get copies?
I think so.
It should have come in your mail.
With the blue sheet that is the legislative...
I think mine is still on my desk.
The, the blue sheet that Tina, that we referenced a minute ago...
Yeah.
That has the information about the new discipline law.
Right.
Yeah.
It came with that.
The two, the two came together.
Correct.
Can you include that at our, in our packets for our next regular scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
Not next week, but the, but the next meetings, just so...
Both pieces of paper?
Well, you should have received it.
Well, we can, we can put this again, because I've...
I'll have a copy if I can get one.
No, I think it should be in the packet, because we'll, we'll be, we'll make a decision whether or not we're comfortable agreeing to this motion.
Right.
So I'll put that in two meetings out. And the only other thing I had is a reminder that we have the MASC conference this week, right? Which a lot of us will be attending, at least in part or in full, so that'll be a good educational opportunity for us.
Look forward to it.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.